Use for the, for the sports park.
No, I, I know they have a allotment. I'd rather.
I can answer that question, Mayor. B C I C is a nonprofit corporation that provides quality of life projects for the city boroughs. You know what that is? Through our board, we have managed to make, and the sports park, I mean, that's way before Commissioner Trani and I, and even Commissioner Longoria ever sat on that board. So, we're, we're tasked with funding this sports park and other projects and, and provide other quality of life projects for other entities like the Palo Alto Battlefield, Sable Palms, West Brown's Little League, different, different little nonprofits that, that assist in providing quality of life. So, you know, we do have.
Let me interject here. Let me interject here. Lupe, I asked you for a list of where the funding was going for B C I C. Do you have that list?
Um, no, sir. I don't have that list with me.
It's an agenda item.
I believe, uh, you want to know about B C I C Sports Park. But I'll get that, uh, list for you.
We'll talk about it later on.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chris.
Briefly go over a few more, uh, par, uh, parport presentations on there.
So, we have to give employees' rates to the purpose?
I already have these.
Go to page, uh, slide 20. Uh, we have the community development. Basically, this is a, a self-funded fund. Uh, we have intergovernmental monies of four million and hundred, two, $2,508. We have expenditures of the same equal amount. Um, on page, on 21, we have the non-bonded debt service fund. Uh, we have a tran, transfer from the landfill tipping fees, three hundred and sixty thousand nine oh five. We have expenditures of lease and interest payments of three hundred and sixty nine oh five, leaving a fund balance of ten million five hundred and thirty-eight. Um, page, uh, page 25, we have the landfill. To summarize on that one, we have revenues of five million six, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, expenditures of five million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Uh, we have a excess of three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, a fund balance of October first of three hundred, nine hundred and ninety dollars, and a fund balance as of October, projected fund balance of the September 30th at three hundred and one, three twenty-nine. Um, slide 23. Slide 23, we have the airport fund, uh, revenues of three million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand six ninety-four, which includes a general fund transfer of one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand, expenditures of three million eight hundred and forty-three thousand two thirty-one, uh, have a, an excess of, uh, four, fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars on the bridge fund. Basically, this is, uh, this is monies that we share with the county on the veterans park. We project, we, uh, we budget for one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand. We have a transfer, this money goes into general fund on slide number 24. When it goes to tran, general fund transfer, we have a net income of five thousand, beginning fund balance fifteen thousand two fifty-eight, ending fund balance of twenty thousand two fifty-eight. Motor vehicle parking system, um, next slide 25.
Does that take into account the raising of?
No, sir. This, this budget does not take into account any, any, uh.
If I said raise?
Uh, slide 25, we have motor vehicle parking system, total revenues of five hundred and eighty thousand six fifteen, expenditures of six hundred and ten thousand one sixty-seven. We have deficit of, uh, twenty-nine thousand five twenty-nine. On this one, there is a fund, beginning fund balance that, that will take care of that deficit. Uh, public transit operating assistance, um, on here, we have operating revenues of one million one hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred, operating expenses of four million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand thirty-five. We have a net loss of three million eight hundred and sixteen thousand five thirty-five. The F T A shares of, shares of cost on this loss of one million nine hundred and eight thousand two sixty-eight. There are other, uh, significant local share comes from, uh, the state, has a five hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five thousand five forty-six, uh, various others, revenues, advertising revenues, in-kind utilities, so forth. Uh, we have a general, uh, general fund cash transfer of one million two hundred and three thousand seven oh one, total local share, one million nine hundred and eight thousand two sixty-eight.
Lupe, let me ask this city manager, uh, city manager. Uh, on the transit, uh, we contract out for the mains and we have, I'm making a lot of report, bad reports.
Yes, sir.
On, on the breakdowns on the bus.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that they're breaking down every, on the average, every five hundred miles when the national average is every seven thousand miles. Would it be in our best interest to perhaps, uh, do this in-house instead of contract out the maintenance? Obviously, the mains is not working for us.
In-house would mean we have to start up, you know, new employees, new equipment, et cetera, et cetera. Now, we, we, we are doing a study to determine the best way to handle this, either, uh, keep the same company or either have the company that does mechanical work with, for the bus system itself, uh, and finding ways of, of, uh, determining the reason why our buses are breaking down frequently. But, like I said before, we have ordered new buses, so that hopefully will resolve a lot of the problem, because we are trying to replace a lot of the buses that have been in service for many, many, many years. But, starting anew, we'd have to, uh.
It'd be too costly?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big expense. We don't have the mach, the equipment that, that is utilized, mechanical equipment.
And you don't think it'd be to our advantage to do that?
It's, it's gonna be a huge undertaking initially. It, it might, uh, it might, uh, be effective after three or four years, uh, but for now, you're, you're talking about hiring mechanics, uh, buying all the equipment necessary to work on buses, et cetera, et cetera. And the people, the people that work on, on the buses also work on, on the rest of the, uh, the fleet, not just, not just the bus, not just the buses.
Is it working also on police?
Yes. Yes, they work on all our fleet.
All our fleet?
Yes. So, that's.
Then maybe, maybe buses be taking, uh, is not a priority and, and they're servicing only the, uh, emergency vehicles to where the, the quality of work or the mains is not there.
Same company, same company, different contract, but the same company works on all our fleet.
Yeah, because if they're breaking down every five hundred miles instead of every seven thousand based on the national average, there's something wrong there. And it's costing us in the long run. Have we gone out for bids on that?
I don't know where that, uh, that figure five hundred, every five hundred miles is coming from, but.
I talked to Norma, she verified that.
Yeah, we do have some buses that are, that are, need to be replaced, and that's why we're ordering new buses.
Have we gone out for contract on that?
On what?
On who maintains our buses?
We haven't. We're doing a study right now, uh, and we got a grant that's, uh, and we're doing a study to determine the best route to take on that. Either, either utilize the same contract or, uh, the possibilities of working with the contract or the company that actually works for, for the bus.
When, when will we know this?
As soon as I do.
Time frame?
Within the next few months, I hope.
Charlie, but do you know, what about the rest of the fleet? Are we having the same problems as we're doing bus? I mean, I think you need, we need to look at it.
No, no, no.
I mean, we need to look at all the, all of the entire fleet.
Our, our major fleet is police, fire, and bus.
Right.
And the rest of the employees don't utilize, uh, uh, vehicles 24 hours a day usually. Uh, so, we can have maintenance done on those pretty, pretty, uh. So, our main concern should be maintaining our police and fire fleet, uh, in proper order.
Which calls into question, maybe we should separate the, the transit from the emergency to work, because maybe the transit is not being focused on as it should and, uh, emergency's taking a priority and, at the expense of good service.
And that's what we're, that's what, that's what we're doing, but understand it's two different contracts. It's the same company that got both contracts.
Well, maybe we need to reevaluate the whole system.
That's exactly, that's exactly what we're doing.
So, by when do you think we can have some?
As, as soon as possible, Mayor.
Two months, three months, one year?
Give me two months.
Two months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Because I understand that the buses, I've been familiar with it because they were first authorized when I worked for Emilio Hernandez when he was the mayor of, uh, Brownsville. And this is when all these proposals were made. But my question is, is there a company, sir, Mr. Kevin, is there a co, a company that has a contract to give maintenance to these vehicles and the mechanic and the tires and everything?
Yes, sir.
How much, how much of every dollar do they take? How much do, how much do you pay them per year of your, how much comes in and how much goes out and how much do they get? Because you see, it's very important that, that if your maintenance costs are too high, then, then something is wrong in your operation. The best thing to do is buy everybody that drives a bus a moped and you're, and you're doing for the business. But, but you need to find out how much you're paying these people because they have no oversight.
Well, we're evaluating that according to city manager, and that's, in two months we'll have an update on that. Okay, continue, Lupe.
I have the last slide on page 27. This is the Brownsville Golf Center Fund. We have a total revenues of nine hundred and thirteen thousand seven fifty, which includes a general fund con, general fund transfer of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, the expenditures of nine hundred and thirty thousand four fifteen. We have, uh, we are revenues under expenses of sixteen thousand six sixty-five. Again, this one has a minor fund, uh, fund reserve that'll take care of this deficit.
Any questions? Thank you, Lupe. This is a public hearing to discuss, um, can we close the public hearing?
I move to continue this public hearing.
A motion continue by Commissioner.
Well, I think we've got somebody else that wants to speak.
Longoria. Ramon, Peters, you want to say something?
Well, you want to be the way for the next item. Um, I wanted to look at, I looked at your budget, obviously, and there was one line item. There's a hundred and four thousand dollars going to the City Commission of Brownsville. I don't know what the hundred and four thousand dollars entails and what, why you all need a hundred and four thousand when you all get paid ten dollars a meeting. There's about thirty meetings a year, there's seven of y'all, that's two thousand one hundred dollars. So, what exactly do you need to a hundred and four thousand dollars? I believe, I, I, let me make my thing and then you can.
He's gonna answer you.
Okay, fine.
City manager.
Well, not all of us, Ramon.
Or Lupe, you want to add something?
It's to cover the maintenance and, uh, the operation of the city, city commission. They have, uh, allocation, I have a line item budget here.
I don't get a cent of it. I will, we don't get a cent of it, because I don't.
What, what line item are you talking about, sir?
Travel. Travel.
We get three thousand a year for travel. Sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't.
Travel.
How about you stop telling me what I do and don't? If I have to go to a training, I have to go to a training.
I, I need to.
And it's required.
I'll, I'll get, I'll, I'll answer you real quick, but have the breakdown here.
Well, I'd like to hear what the breakdown is. I mean, if we're gonna talk about it, let's talk about it.
Which, which line item are you talking about?
Under expenses, um, this year twenties or this year back now?
No, this is.
It'll be your top line item and number one, ten, and number eleven, it's on page 27. So, you wanna see it for yourself, it's on page 27.
Okay, ba, basically, on, on this, uh.
Address the chair, don't address the commissioner, please. Address the chair.
The hundred and four thousand dollar item is broken down into, uh, personal services, five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Materials and supplies, twenty-three thousand two, two hundred and eighty dollars. Miscellaneous services, seventy-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Miscellaneous services are how much?
Seventy-three thousand seven twenty-five. This, the breakdown on that is communications, fifteen thousand eight twenty-five, rental of equipment, five hundred dollars, professional service, five hundred dollars, advertising, five hundred.
Professional services, what is that?
Well, that's just a line item budget in case there are any type of professional services.
Yeah, but is that attributed to commission or is that legal or what is it?
Commission. This is a line item for commission. Each, each department is allocated a certain budget.
Okay, and so, that's seventy-three thousand dollars of miscellaneous services.
Which includes?
Which includes what?
Food or what?
We have, uh, I think there's a, a line item budget of, uh, four thousand dollars for travel for each of the commissioners, uh, advertising.
And I pay a lot of my travel out of my pocket.
Lot, lot of line item of, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars. Auto allowances of eight, eight thousand four hundred dollars. Training expense, a thousand dollars. Rental of building and land, again, this is just budget, doesn't mean that you actually utilize this budget, it's just a, a budget that's set up in case a department needs to use it for an operational needs for whatever it is.
Well, I guess that, that's one of the questions I have when we, we look at the budget and we're going through it, like it says here, general government, and it's lumped into expenditures, and it just says fourteen million seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. There, there's no delineation of, of what that money is, and now you're showing, uh, the budget for the commissioners and you're saying you've lumped in seventy-three thousand dollars under miscellaneous, and there's really no allocation or understanding of how that money is broken down. Well, you've got the line item there, but we don't have that information.
I haven't.
I apologize, I, I thought that this line item, because what was posted on the, on the internet was a general budget, as, but as far as detailed line item, this is a almost eighty-three page report of just line items, exact, line item by line item, which includes all general fund. Uh, I believe it was sent to some commissioners, uh, I, I thought it was sent to all the, all the commissioners. And we could resend it to you for, for your review.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, yes, I received a line item budget, which I have at the office to make that very clear, but in the packet that we received today as we're going through this and we sit here, what we have is lump sums, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I guess you expected us to review the, the details and then come here and talk about it, okay?
Like I said, if we didn't get the line, well, you said you had the line item.
Yeah, I, I have lineup, and I guess that's another question, is if you've got seventy-three thousand dollars set aside for us and you're just saying that, that's lumped in, I, I guess that, that's a place that we could possibly potentially cut. I mean, that, that's.
Well, there's, there's, uh, there's, just, just, for two thousand and eight, your actual expenditures on that, on their particular like, those, those line items are sixty-two thousand eight ninety-five. So, we, we base it on, on that and based on, on the current budget that's allocated for two thousand and nine. That's how Michelle Gonzalez arrives a, at a proposed budget for two thousand and ten. It's based on your usage plus the current budget that was allocated to give you an adequate budget so that you can continue operations. And there are, you know, most, some of these line items, of course, there's, there's communications, telephones, uh.
Well, let me tell you something, that's something that he can see on the internet. Yes, you can.
This, this particular, this particular one, no, sir. This, this particular one that I'm looking at right now is.
But he can sit down and ask, request it from me if he wants to, yeah.
Yes.
What are you, what, what, what are you getting at?
No, I'm just saying, just post it.
What are you getting at?
I'm not getting at it, I'm trying to actually.
I mean, you, you always have some hidden agenda, Commissioner.
That's, that's a little defamatory, I think.
It is, man. Stay focused and address the chair, please, okay?
Look, if you really wanna know what I'm trying to do, Commissioner, is, is that you wanna increase two cents above the effective tax rate with, by the way, the effective tax rate is actually higher than last year's tax rate. You raised taxes two years ago by point zero four percent. Yes, you did, Commissioner.
We did. We haven't raised taxes in six years.
Let's, let's, let's get back on track over here, please.
Look, if you, if he, he's saying that he hasn't raised taxes in.
Look, we're not here to debate you, uh, young man.
You were debating, you were insulting him essentially.
We're here to listen, we're here to listen to you.
Okay.
And, and, so, say your piece.
Two years ago, if you wanna look at it yourself, Commissioner, you can look at the, the breakdown of the tax rate. You raised tax, I think it's the first or second page under line, item number five. You raised taxes two years ago by point zero, zero, four percent or something like that. You did. And I've, I've had, uh, last budget cycle, last year, you sat here.
I'll give you that, I'll give you that, but it was so.
I, I know, it'd be interesting, you're saying he hasn't raised taxes in six years and he did.
Let's not, let's not get, let's not get into this.
What's your point?
You know, get to a point, let's go.
My point is, is I don't, my point is that I don't.
Do your cert, do the community a cert.
Everybody up.
Do the community a service and let's stay focused on, on what you, what, do you have something?
Yes, I do.
That you wanna address?
Well, I'm just, I'm, yes, I actually.
Okay, what do you wanna address?
My, my question is, is I, I think you can cut about maybe four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of your budget, and I wanna offer it to you. I believe that even, if the twenty-one hundred dollars that you all spend that you're being paid for, I would recommend that maybe you don't take it this year, just as, I mean, it's just ten dollars.
I give mine back to the city.
That's fine, you do that, maybe others don't.
Okay, but that's, that's a personal choice. You shouldn't come here and ask, ask them to do that.
I'm asking you to do.
It's fifty dollars a month, you begrudging them fifty dollars a month?
No, I'm not. I'm actually begrudging the fact that you have a hundred and four thousand dollars budgeted for your city commission, and I really, I would actually recommend what Commissioner Trani have recommended to the Brownsville Convention and Visit of your last week in saying that you can go maybe, uh, quarterly and say, you know, these are expenses, because we are in tough times and you keep repeating we're in tough times, so why don't you do it out in public, all the travel that you do, just put it on the agenda and say, we're gonna expend this money, so everybody can see it, just call transparency. I'm also offering that you, I, I'm not done yet, Mayor. I actually, you're rolling your eyes at me, 'cause I'm trying to help you here.
I just, I just don't see the pettiness.
There's no pettiness whatsoever, Mayor.
Yes, it is petty, because let me tell you, these people give a lot of their time, a lot of their time. I take out of my pocket to travel personally.
And that's your personal choice.
I entertain out of my pocket personally. I don't ask you for a dime, okay? And these people sacrifice their time.
I don't like, I wouldn't give you a dime, I don't.
And here you come to be.
Mayor, Mayor, he wants this reaction out of you, so just let him talk, so you can go sit down.
Okay, I was gonna actually commend the legal department and say that their, their budget line item is twenty-three thousand dollars than it was in two thousand and eight. So, what I reckon, my, my point is that I think that there is on, in your budget, there is a hundred thousand dollars set aside for lawsuits, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for legal consultation. I believe you were the one who said the reason we're hiring Mr. Saucy, uh, in March was because we, a lot of the consultation that the city gets is from Mr. Saucy's law practice, and now that you hired him, it'll save the city money. So, my question to you is, why are you setting aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for legal consultation and lawsuits when I think you don't necessarily need that amount?
We have, we have stuff going on, are we, what we met today in executive was.
Oh, oh, I don't wanna know you did an executive, I don't want you to violate Toma. The thing is, is that I, I recommend that in two thousand and eight, you only spent eleven thousand dollars on lawsuits, and you have a hundred thousand dollars set aside for two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. I recommend that you don't, go to ten thousand and you also do it quarterly. These are just some ideas so that you don't necessarily have to raise taxes on everybody else. I also recommend that, you know, and, and you, you have twenty thousand dollars set aside for municipal court contract. In two thousand and eight, you didn't pay, you paid zero dollars in municipal court, uh, contract to get collections. I, I, I would venture to say, you know, you don't necessarily need to be spending twenty thousand dollars on that. There's also fifteen thousand dollars that you increase the budget on human resources, which I don't know why you really need to, being, when the city manager said, I leave at the last meeting, the meeting after, he said that we haven't necessarily been hiring people, so why do you have to increase human resources by fifteen thousand dollars? If you add all that together on top of, oh, there's one other thing, I wanna make sure I get every amount so you can get to four fifty, so, because four fifty accounts for one penny increase, and that way you don't have to raise taxes two pennies unless you really, really, really want to, Commissioner, and not get re-elected next year.
See, Manager, I think he's applying for your job.
No, I'm not. Applying for your job. Oh, yeah, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
He dresses the part, I don't know about the rest.
A hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty-nine, two, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred dollars is set aside for elections. I don't believe you're gonna be having elections next fiscal year. That's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred dollars you don't have to set aside. That's savings to you, and, and, and for you to be begrudging me, or you, Commissioner, for you begrudging me because I'm trying to help you so you don't have to raise taxes.
We don't necessarily use it, it just goes, stays in the general fund.
It stays in the general fund, but it's set aside, so that, because that, the reason, at, at least I believe, maybe I'm being, you know, wrong in this, but I believe that when you set it, the reason you set aside a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars is, that, that accounts for the tax raise increase, I believe.
So, noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, there's one other thing. Um, I wanna remind you, uh, Mayor, that you're right, that you're not, uh, that, there's, I believe, seven hundred thousand dollars set aside for street maintenance, and that's two thousand, two point two million dollars lower than what it was spent last year on, on maintenance, uh, for street maintenance. And some of these eye items that I'm pointing out, I think that, you know, you may be able to do without, because there's gonna be people who are gonna be calling Commissioner Atkinson, for example, say, I want my street fixed, or I, whatever. You're not gonna be able to have the money, Commissioner, and then you're not necessarily gonna get re-elected. Um, the other thing is, is that, and your line item, I, and this, this is not a knock against you, Commissioner, going down, and I want you to know that it's not. I believe that there's an option for you to make ten thousand dollars without getting it from the general fund, I really do. Um, the ten thousand dollars for the Brownsville Farmers Market, I think you can get, because there's been a lot of mass media, uh, in, in favor of the Brownsville Farmers Market, do what, um, Mayor did two years ago when he recommended the volunteer one dollar fee in your P U V, because there's, there's, you're, you're essentially raising five hundred households twenty dollars in their taxes to pay for your ten thousand dollars. It's true, because, um, the last year's tax rate plus the average is, comes out to twenty do, uh, twenty dollars times five hundred households equals your ten thousand dollars. You could probably get more if you go down the volunteer route and maybe be able to get a dollar a month from every single household, and that will help you and help your, 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 uh, pet project. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, you want to continue, Lupe?
That concludes the presentation.
That concludes it, okay? This is a public he, um, we got one more citizen, okay? This is the last one, go ahead.
First of all, on the ten thousand dollars, I think the farmer's market, uh, can be moved because, I, I didn't hear this story. Security's being provided to, okay? City has to provide security there, plus electricity and other services. What is the total amount? Four times a, a month for seven months? That's a lot of money. If they really wanna have a farmer's market, they can move it into the university since they's working it out. And we have two individuals here, two commissioners, sir, that I feel that is a conflict of interest, even though they say they're not in it, it is a conflict of interest. Uh, you can also freeze some budgets. Number one, the golf course, it's losing money. So, I just heard, if we can lay off a person for one time a month or two times a month, okay, why don't we close the golf course on the least busiest day, Monday or Tuesday? You save some money. Uh, you gotta look at other options, the police department and the fire department, they have this union that's hurting the regular workers of the city. And I talked to some workers of the city and they say, we cannot seem to get anything, and they're multitesting us so much, that is so much work we're doing. So, it's the union that's really hurting them. If you give them a raise, and I hope you do give them a cost of living raise, a cola, but the thing is, will the union say, we're not gonna ask for no money from that money? The me-too clause? That's what hurts them. And I talked to some police officers, and they say, we're making good money on overtime. And one officer even recommended to me saying, if they would take our overtime pay, we could hire more policemen. But the union is not gonna like that at all, because we're so afraid of the union, because they say, we protect you, Mr. Dureste. We come and save your life, Mr. Dureste. And, excuse me, they volunteer, they want to be in that profession. You never complain of what you're doing. That's important. Okay? We are losing money on the bus and we just, one point three million. They started using small buses, Mayor. And it worked very fine. Outstanding. Because sometimes in the galaxia, there's not too many people, but the small bus came in there and it was wonderful. The people could get on a faster. Candy half, half and half, you can save some money on there. And I guarantee you, they're more, air condition is much better, like you were saying. And they're not gonna break down that much and they can be repaired much easier, sir. I was told that there is a park gonna get a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I think the name of that park, it's Chacalaca, but they changed it to Charlie Kavler Senior Park. It's on Central. Sometimes we have to slow down before we jump into that areas. If we could hold down some of that money into that park, it can be done. There are three parks within the area, Central Park, that park, and I think there's the Parkway Acres Park. So they're all in that same area. So you have to look into those area things about cutting down on the budget. Another concern is, okay, the tennis is losing some money, the airport is losing big time money. What can we do on the sports park? I know Mr. Atkinson will get mad if I say anything about, but we can use four A and four B money. Because you said that four B money is for the quality of life. If we could slow down the sports park a little bit and use that, some of that revenue, and it's a lot of money, it's almost a million dollars. If we could use that money for the sidewalks and some street repairs, it would help your budget and it would bring it down. And the last thing I want to talk about, and I have it here, is basically, our employees that work do need a cost of living. And I hope that somewhere, somehow, you can help them. And that'll be appreciated by all the people. Because I think you all have good hearts, you all know what's going on with them. I know we need more people to run the city. The city has grown so big and you know, sir. So, I hope that all of you can understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion to continue is approved. We're at the public comment.
Seven, public comment.
I think you all said your piece, you all wanna, you wanna come again at us? Can we forego this? Can we forego this? Okay, let's go to.
No, they want to talk.
Mr. Pettis, I had a feeling somebody was gonna come forward. I think this is what happens when we tell.
Did he sign up? No, 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 seriously, no, no.
Stella, did he sign up?
Yeah.
Yes, he signed up.
He signed up, but he signed up after six. The first five, the first five people had already been signed up and he is number six.
Exactly. But they didn't do it and it was only after five because there was a presentation.
Yes, but the first five people have already signed up for the fifteen minute period.
Okay, the ordinance doesn't state it.
We have a lot of people here, I would really wish people would, that.
Okay, well, you recognize somebody in the items for action.
The first one is Vener Rodriguez. The first one to sign up was Vener Rodriguez.
William Garza, William Garza is number two.
Pardon me?
William Garza is number two.
William Garza is number two. And then we're gonna have Dagoberto Barrera, number three.
He's the one.
Fernando Ruiz, okay, and Reverend Alex Resendez, those are the ones who are signed up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Garza and I work for the La Quinta Hotels. I'm here in support of the resolution presented by Commissioner Melissa Zamora. And I'm asking your fellow commissioners to please support her resolution, asking for the creation of a new C V B board. I would like to add that I would like to keep, in my opinion, and speaking to many other hoteliers, keep the present CEO and his employees, but create a new C V B board. I think I speak for many of them and the C V board, the makeup also calls for a ex-officio from the city of Brownsville, could be the mayor or a city commissioner or a city manager. But in speaking to the majority of the hoteliers, we would like to see creation of a new C V B board and to keep the present employees, the CEO, Mariano Ayala, and his staff intact. Thank you, please consider that.
Fernando Ruiz.
Members of the commission, good afternoon, my name is Fernando Ruiz. This young lady wanted to speak and she was not aware of the procedure, so I'm yielding the remainder of my time to her, it's okay with you, sir.
Pardon me, attorney?
I'm sorry, I think under the rules, the speakers have to be signed up before six o'clock. I think it would be entirely appropriate to yield time to someone who was also signed up as a speaker. But it would be inappropriate to yield time to someone who is not signed up as a speaker.
Well, because there were no forms, sir, and, but, sir.
There were no forms because the first five had already been filled out.
Okay, would you edit something?
We only have five.
Okay, the pardon me, attorney's ruling, you already said?
No, he was not, there were no.
We have five forms out front because you have a fifteen minute period. At three minutes per person, that's five people. And the first five that sign up are the ones that get public comment.
Okay, look.
Then it would be inappropriate, sir, for you to yield your time to someone who is not properly signed up to speak.
Can it be at the discretion of the mayor?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, let me ask the commission what the wishes are. Would you allow us to bend the rules a little bit? Well, these, especially some of the people that come up, they try to demand that we follow procedure. And now you want to break it, let's break it. But they have to realize too, we're breaking it for them. But then when we break it other times, they hold us accountable by coming up and making a spectacle of how we fall. To allow them to speak, okay, allow, go ahead.
Hi.
Okay, but let me, let me say this. It's not fair to put us in this predicament that you expect us to follow the rules, but when it comes to you, you don't, you don't want us to follow the rules.
Well, did you get a consensus?
I'm just, I'm just making a statement, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just, I'm not.
The rules, the rules say.
Rules are the rules.
No, that's cowardly, man.
No, you put us in a position.
I vote that we keep it the same.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Teta Flores, I have a family business, it's called Flores Farmers Market. We've been in business for sixty years. And that whole time, we have never thought about asking a single red dime from the city. The Brownsville Farmers Market from its beginning, it started probably from funds, federal funds. The city doesn't rent the property where they conduct their business, that's lost revenue for the city. They don't even have to pay the, or they don't have to get the permits that I have to get. And each of these papers, they're separate permits, I have to pay a hundred dollars, which they don't have to pay. I think it's outrageous that we have a commissioner that heads the Brownsville Farmers Market and she wants money. I can't believe it. The address of the Farmers Market Inc. is her address.
Excuse me.
Thirty-five South.
Excuse me, a personal, excuse me, personal attacks aren't allowed on commissioners.
It's not a personal attack.
This commissioner, excuse me, this commissioner referring to no longer has any association with the Farmers Market.
Well, okay, fine, but why is the address of the Farmers Market Inc., thirty-four South Korea?
Anyone can be, anyone can be an incorporator of a business, that's just a matter of filing.
That's a conflict of interest.
It's not a conflict of interest, I've already looked, I understand.
Okay, it's, she's stating her opinion, okay?
I think it's a conflict of interest and I think you, you need to resign because this is out of order. This is not acceptable, that you're soliciting money for.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna inject again, personal attacks on commissioners are not allowed during public comment.
Well, there's a conflict of interest, sir.
Okay, you made, you made your point and I think everybody heard it.
I don't want my tax dollar money to go fund anything of the Farmers Market. They already get plenty from the city, they use the property, they don't pay the, they don't get the permits. I have nothing against the Farmers Market, in fact, it's great for my business because the more competition I have, the more business I get.
I appreciate it.
So it doesn't hurt my business at all.
Appreciate it.
But I don't want my tax dollar money going to it.
Okay, thank you, I think it was noted, give my best to your mom also, hope she's doing well, okay?
City Manager Charlie, you may want to talk about the permits that each vendor does have to get, I think she's incorrect on.
And the difference between a not-for-profit and a private company.
Okay, we're not allowed to respond.
No, I'm just asking the city manager to point some things out to her.
Okay, you need to be recognized to talk, now go on, Mr. Resendez, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and, you all hear me, yeah? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mi nombre, Alex Resendez, Reverend Alex Resendez is my name. Greetings to you all on the three points of the triangle, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost, the Lord bless you all. As you all know, I am the president of Concerned Citizens Committee. We're not a very good group, but there's a lot of people out there that bring us and tell us things that are going on. Today, I have three concerns that I'm gonna try to speak on my three minutes. But the first one is that when I came here the last time, you all were speaking about Morrison Road. I believe that Commissioner Atkinson said that Morrison Road tied in with Alton Glore. Morrison Road does not go nowhere. I followed it, no up a ninguna parte, se para en la calle. City manager said, Mr. Resendez, it goes to Alton Glore. I wish you guys would take me over there and show me how it goes to Alton Glore.
It goes, it goes, it goes in our planning.
Oh, your planning, okay, so you're assumption, you're dreaming, okay, you guys are dreaming. Now, so you, you guys like me by saying.
No, it's an approval.
Okay, the second, I got three minutes, Mayor, I don't want to argue. The second thing is that there's a lot of rumors, okay, about two lady commissioners that they belong to, what he was saying. It is against the city charter, it is against the city laws, that you're not supposed to have commissioners working for entities that work or do business with the city. If you don't know it, Mr. Lawyer, you better check it out, city charter, okay? My third thing with my three minutes, Victoria Heights Elementary School. I don't know what you all are gonna do, but I'm pretty sure you all can't do nada. Victoria Heights Elementary School, it's got kids over there, they're just going to school right now, they're coming in. Many people from that neighborhood have called me and they said, Mr. Resendez, do something about it, go tell the commissioners. I understand that one of you commissioners is in charge. Hay una compañía, there's a company, waste disposal. You also have laws, and I think you do here in Brazil, no fumes, no noise, and those kids are going to school with a lot of noise and a lot of fumes. Pero you all cannot fix those things, I can bet my neck and your hip you can fix it. Because the company that's there has been there for many years and they're very powerful people. Why don't you challenge them and try to fix that for our kids that are smelling those fumes? Victoria Elementary School, I don't think you guys have the capacity to do it. Thank you all.
They're grandfathered, okay, next, next item eight?
Item eight, consideration and action to authorize the Brownsville Fire Department to donate obsolete bunker gear to the city of Tampico, Mexico.
Once again, I stand in front of you on behalf of Fire Chief Peters. My name is David Enos, I'm the chief of Brownsville Fire Department. We would like to donate ten sets of bunker gear to Tampico, to the Tampico Fire Department. This bunker gear has been put out of service, it's no longer gonna be used by our firefighters. It's still in good conditions compared to what those firefighters are using at the present time to combat fires. Once again, this is just a consideration to donate these items to Mexico if it's approved by you all.
Okay, this is our sister city?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Chief, do our, do our firefighters have extra bunker gear to do their training, things like that? Is there more than enough to, for our own staff?
Even for training, we're governed by a Texas Commission and this bunker gear's been put out of service and would not be allowed to be used for training purposes. Although that would be a good recommendation, you know, some of our bunker gear does undergo some undertaking and damages during the training process. But even during training, if someone would get hurt and we would be caught, or firefighter would be using that gear.
Right.
Liability wise would be.
It's gonna be on the city. No question. Thank you.
Commissioner Tru.
Yes, sir.
Can you just for, you know, informational purposes, explain what bunker gear is and basically what the life expectancy of the equipment is? And you just talked about the liability aspect, but if you can kind of let people know, because, you know, you threw out the term bunker gear and everybody's like, whoa, you know, what are you talking about?
And I thank you and forgive me the opportunity to explain myself. Bucket gear, as we know, it is the personal protective gear that firefighters wear. It's the bunker coat and bunker pants. And in addition to the, to those items, we have our helmets and we have our boots and gloves and S V As, which is self-breathing apparatus that we use to go into burning buildings where it's filled with smoke. The bunker gear lifespan, as we have it now, is about five years. And that's, that standard is in place or put in place by the Texas Commission of Firefighters. And it's N F A standard eighteen fifty-one, which is, was just recently adopted. When that, when we adopted that, that standard or the commission did, it put cities as ours, other fire departments in a motion to have to replace bunker gear that would otherwise be still in use. Not all the bunker gear that has been put out of service is because of the age limit. Some of it is damaged and would not meet the standard of inspection.
Now, the equipment that you're gonna send or you're asking to send to Victoria, it's still usable? It still has a, you know, a useful purpose, or?
Under the Texas Commission, we cannot, no longer use that bunker gear, it's been retired. So, there's two ways of disposing of this bunker gear. One would be shredding it and sending it to the landfill and the other would be to donate it to our sister city. Where they, and as I may have mentioned, are probably using less qualified equipment to do the job. Some of those men and women are just showing up simply with what they're wearing when they show up to work. This would give them protection, more so than what they have in place right now. And believe me, the bunker gear that they receive is received with open arms. I can't express, or I can't speak for them, I wish you would hear it from their own, their own voice. It's well welcomed and, and they don't all have the resources that we have, unfortunately. And that's why we're, we would like to donate that bunker gear to them. And just for the record, if I may, we have donated other bunker gear to Matamoros and other sister cities.
Well, that was my next question is, we've donated bunker gear to several cities in Mexico and I think in Tamaulipas and Nueva Leon. But do you rotate through or is it just a?
Well, we, we're approached by the departments themselves, we don't necessarily select, this is the one we're gonna give. But I assure you, they all do, they all ask for it. And yes, of course, we try to distribute it as evenly as possible. And with your approval and permission, we'll probably do this again in the future. Again, every year, we're gonna be taking some gear out of service, it's gonna be retired. And an inventory is kept of all the bunker gear that's retired. It's stored in boxes and it is stored in a proper manner. It's labeled and, and if there's something that is absolutely unusable, that could damage or endanger firefighters' lives, it's completely taken out of service. We won't even donate that equipment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, you mentioned that this was gonna be going to the city of Tampico under the sister city agreement. Do we have a sister city agreement with Tampico?
My understanding is we do.
I never thought, I thought we had it with Matamoros and something, and they own.
No, in fact, I think officially, officially, Tampico is our sister city, not Matamoros. Matamoros is our sister city because we're joined at the heel, my understanding. But I, we have several sister cities. It's one per state, my understanding. Dag, you know, I'm sure you have a humane bone in your body, no? This is equipment that's discarded, it's no good to us by our standards.
Second.
We have motion approved by Commissioner Atkinson, second by Commissioner Longoria, is that right?
That's funny.
Terrani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, thank you, David. Next item?
Item number nine, consideration and action, consideration and possible action to amend the bylaws and/or articles of incorporation of Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, on the meeting of August seventeenth, passed to amend the bylaws of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. The particular section of the bylaws was to try to reduce, is to reduce the number of elected officials from, allowed from being four to two officials. Mr. Our vice chair for the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, Mr. Hernandez, I think wants to say just a few words. He was the individual on the board that brought the item to the agenda at B C I C.
Thank you. Please, you do.
Let me introduce myself, my name is Carlo Hernandez. I am currently the vice chair on the B C I C board. Hopefully, I won't be as extensive as some of the people here prior to me and I'll try to be as brief and as informative. And I will probably be able to answer more questions immediately with speaking. The consensus behind me bringing this item to us, to our board for vote, was merely to get a, a better interest from the public. In other words, we have a lot of people in Brownsville that do not know what all goes on and what it takes to do certain things. We're all very good, opinionated about things when we don't like something. So, due to the knowledge that I've gained from serving on this board up to now, I would express a change made as we have proposed so that the city commission would appoint, nominate more interested people, knowledgeable people, and people who are responsible to making Brownsville a better place. That is the reasoning behind, is that if the voters put you where you are now, return that confidence back to the people so that they can also see and learn as they need to, to make Brownsville a better place. So that they can also see and learn as they need to, to make Brownsville a better place.
Well, Sid.
Thank you.
Carlo, thank you very much for coming and bringing this to us. Um, this is the next one.
May I have a?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. I just wanted to make clear, state law states that you, you cannot have more than four, uh, city commissioners on the, on the BCIC Board. And the bylaws are currently written to state that the city commission may not have more than four. Obviously, because you have seven member, seven-member board, four would be a quorum. So as a practical matter, you never seem to have more than three, three or less on the board. So, uh, what I, I just wanted to make clear that the city commission does have the authority to do what it wants in this. If it wants to reduce the number of, uh, directors, it can. If, if it wants to keep the number the same, it, it can.
I think what he said, yeah, I think he said it very well. So, you know, if it's, um, uh, acceptable to the commission, um.
I have a question for legal. If, uh, and just for my clarification, if the four B standards were set by an election by the people, and that was what was introduced when the board was set, does it have to be the voter? Or can it be the city commission to change that policy, Dr. Barra? Or legal?
The city, the state law basically states under the Development Corporation Act that the city commission has the authority to amend the articles of incorporation at any time as is fit.
Four A or four B, right?
And we could, and we can change that, um, as, as you want. The only thing is, you could not have more than four directors, which would be a clear prohibition.
Mayor, may I have the floor? You know, well, I guess what I don't understand is if, if, if the city commission, you know, makes a recommendation to appoint a member to the four B board, you know, why would we need to change anything? You know, I, I think we could understand, you know, we have two commissioners, be, before we had three, and there wasn't an issue. Um, and so I guess one of my questions is, is that the entire four B board voted one in favor of reducing the, the member of elected officials from four to two? Is that, is that, did everybody vote in favor of that?
Uh, we had one absence and one individual voted against it.
Okay. So, I mean, so again, going back, why, why change something in which the commission's gonna make the, you know, make the recommendation? If we decide two or, or three, you know, why, why make the change? Well, I mean, I, I still don't understand.
Well, it goes, it's the other way.
Well, I'm actually.
BCIC would make the recommendation of city commission to, to make decisions on based on the projects they're presenting.
No, we appoint the members. City commission appoints the members to four B board. So why do we necessarily need to tell ourselves, you know, instead of having three commissioners, uh, or three elected officials sit on four B, we now only want two? Why would we tell ourselves, I mean, why do we want to do that?
It's not a matter of telling yourself, Commissioner. It's a matter of appointing more of the public, which is whom elected you to where you are now.
And we can do that.
If you would pass that on and share, you have other duties that you need to do.
Correct.
And you have many tasks. You just mentioned earlier, where you were at spray washing graffiti and so forth. Let other people assume also responsibilities to do with the city.
I agree.
So they can learn. If you don't want to, you know, if you want to serve on the board yourself, you're so welcome to appoint yourself. It's, it's not a matter of whether you want to change it or not. It's fine. We just thought to have more public participation rather than elected participation on our board would maybe get a better turnaround from the public's input and public comment in regards to the city as a whole.
I agree that we can appoint other members to four B other than city, you know, elected officials. And so, and I don't think we necessarily need to change anything. I'll be honest with you. I think that's something that the commission can decide to do. You know what? Next appointing, not elected official. If that's what's, what, what the board chooses. And, and I should remind you, I mean, and the rest of the public, that there are many other boards, advisory committees that the public can be a part of, not just four B, but they can, they can learn as, just as much, if not more. Other committees that I know need good individuals. For example, beautification. We're gonna have about four slots that are gonna come vacant. We need good individuals that are willing to donate their time and, you know, again, you know, their, their knowledge and skills and so forth. So, I don't want to make four B sound like a, I don't think we should, we should make four B sound as, as an elitist group and say, well, just four B, we're gonna take out, you know, we're gonna reduce the number of elected officials. There's plenty of other boards for the, I mean, again, for, plenty of other boards that, that individuals can apply to participate in. And I think that the commission can make a decision whether they wanna go from two to one elected official on four B.
Sometimes, Commissioner Camarillo, when you have three members, three elected members on any board or a committee, I think that that's being a little bit leaning towards one side. If we want fairness, which is, I imagine, one of your campaign slogans, then all we're asking for, at least I am, as a member of the board, is to keep that vote. Whether you want to not appoint someone from the commission or not, all we're asking for is whether you approve, you vote, to reduce the amount to a set number of being two only. And if you don't want to appoint two, that's still the same consensus that you're saying. So it's just a matter of what you'd like to do. To bring it up before you, to follow the guy.
And I think that's a fair statement that you don't want too much of the commission being one board because then it controls the board. Why have the other members? I, I guess that would create a feeling of, you know, what are we doing here if we're just rubber stamping or is being dominated by the commission?
Uh, I don't think it works like that at all.
Commissioner, you're not recognized.
Well, I'm gonna talk right after you.
You're not recognized. You're not recognized.
Finish what you have to say.
I think whatever, uh, that board recommends is gonna ultimately come to us anyway.
No.
Anyway, for us to decide on.
Well, we're not, like I say, it's, everything is, is very well within our board. We're doing very good. A lot of the reason that we hear a lot of negative feedback is due to people not having any involvement. So I believe that by having more involvement from the public, it would eliminate a lot of false figures, false representation, and bad comments about facts that people do not know. It's not about singling out any politician which, it's not about that. It's that due to negative responses and negative comments on behalf of the public that is misinformed or not informed, or base themselves just on comments made, coffee shop talk, that's what we do not need. The city of Brownsville doesn't need that, period. I mean, it's, it's really, really a matter of people who have just come on board have finally decided to review what is going on. The review could have been done prior. If the interest is there, that's all I'm trying to get at.
Well, and.
It's knowledgeable people to help with the quality of life projects, instead of having someone who has no knowledge in architecture or construction. That is more useful. Rather than you saying, well, you know, making a selection or a choice, well, it's too bad. If we have more qualified people, or people with interest, we can make better choices and, and good quality life projects that will be longer lasting and better for the public of Brownsville.
Well, right now, again, you only have two elected.
Commissioner, you're not recognized.
May I have the floor?
Commissioner Atkinson's recognized.
Well, let me ask you something, uh, uh, Mayor. You've, I don't think you've ever been to one of our meetings, but there is an overwhelming cooperation between, uh, ourselves, Commissioner Trani and I sit on this board, and we're able to assist these other individuals on what they like to see from Brownsville. It's, it's more accountability with the commission and the city, unlike four A that's by themselves. And I think we have to do something about that and put some commissioners on that board so we can bring it more into the city and hold, hold them more accountable. But you can't get more, and I think, uh, City Manager Charlie Cabbler will say it best, you know, as far as four A and four B, who would you want and the makeup and how it's being run right now? Who better sits the city and what we're trying to do for the, for the community?
You're asking me a question?
Yes.
Well, obviously, we, when we initiated four B, we structured it in a way where we, uh, are more involved in the decision-making and the presentations and, uh, involve the commission eventually in some of the decisions that are made. So I would say, uh, we got, we got more of a, of a communication, uh, with four B than we do before.
Then I'll be honest with you, I mean, Commissioner Trani and I don't always agree. Sometimes we're against each other on that board. Everybody here has their own voice. We're not, three don't go up there and say, we're, we're gonna run it our way. Cause we all have different wants and needs on that board too. So it's a.
And you don't have three. You have two elected officials.
See, what the problem was is four. We changed it to three. It's, I mean, I mean, however the wishes of this board, but, but just to clarify what you're saying, that the three commissioners don't go in there and have the majority of the, of the, no. Sometimes we don't, we don't get along and agree.
And everybody's opinion is respected here. This, the gentleman brought this to our attention. Uh, I think it's all with good intent. It's up to the commission, uh, what they wanna do, whether they wanna support that or, or not. You have your opinion. I believe, uh, a board with too many commissioners, it kind of affect, may affect the, uh, the, uh, the outcome or the workings of the board, in my opinion, but that's my opinion.
Would you like to be on that board?
Mr. Hernandez, you said that you were interested in having some board members with a vested interest, with some background, that are more engaged. What is your background and what is the background of the other board members?
Okay. It's not that I'm fishing for better qualified board, uh, commissioners. The board members, for example, my background, I have been in the air conditioning business for the past twenty years. Prior to my air conditioning business, I was involved in general maintenance of a facility, which meant flooring of concrete, repairing foundations, reading blueprints. So my background comes from construction, the service end, repairing things. When we work on quality of life projects or we view blueprints, we review construction manuals, we review specs and designs, there may be a person that has no idea whatsoever what a black line drawing is or elevations, or why there's a problem with a facial design or structural design, or particular planning, particular drainage. It, it's all matters. There's, there's, there could be baby projects, selecting benches, there's many things. If we have people who at least have interest, hidden knowledge, that really, you know, can contribute more, that would make our board and the city more successful. It could be, maybe reduce the, the time to make decisions on certain, on certain projects. We don't have currently a problem, but for our board to continue with the success that I feel we have gained in the years to come, if we involve people that can be of better service, I think that's a matter of trust to the city. Which is why I, you know, wanted to share this and would like for this to be considered. I don't stand to gain anything from this. I want for the future board members to be able to perform and respond to city commission as we do now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a possible action, uh?
I have a comment, Lady. I am the former chairman before Commissioner Atkinson came on to the four B. And, um, I'll give you a little bit of history on the four B. I came in thanks to my nomination back then by Commissioner, then Commissioner David Benicord under the, under the committee. We were the original three city commissioners that came on to that board. Dr. Barra, do you, do you remember why we came on that board? It was a city commission decision to come on to that board. Because so much money had been misspent by the members that were on there when you were trying to choose a site selection on the properties. That's when that commission decided to put three city commissioners on there. We made the decisions and that's how the project finally took off. Now, there's all these, you know, if I hadn't, all the information that I learned, because I went strictly through the construction phase of the sports park, because of my lack of knowledge in the construction business, and it would went on there. It made me wanna go and learn and study and make more effective decisions as a board member, as a city commissioner. So that served, my experience on the four B made me, helped me make those tough decisions at the city commission, the informed decisions that needed to be made as both a council member and as a representative of the four B.
Okay, this is, uh, possible, action item.
Mayor, I want to make the motion, uh, to read as follows, uh, on note, section three point zero two. Change from, change from no more than three to no more, I'm sorry, change no more than four to no more than three of the seven directors that may sit on four B, serve as elected officials.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'm gonna abstain on this one because I'm on.
Well, then I guess I should abstain too then.
Okay, so we have two abstentions?
I, I guess so, yeah, that would make sense. Thank you.
City Secretary, did you get that? We have two abstentions. Thank you, Carlo. Okay, uh, next item.
Item ten, consideration and action regarding the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation's fiscal year 2010 budget.
Honorable Mayor, City, City Commission, uh, what you have presented before you is the fiscal year 2010 budget from the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. Uh, for the sales tax revenue, we're using the, the revenue from fiscal year 2005. Uh, consistently, the board has always taken a very fiscally conservative viewpoint as far as setting the budget for, uh, BCIC, given that the funds for BCIC come from the quarter cent sales tax. Um, the next line item then adds thirty thousand of interest income, which brings it to three point three, which is line item sixteen. Uh, then there are administrative costs allocated. Again, these are the administrative, same administrative costs that have been allocated for the last several years, which is twenty-four thousand for the BCIC board and two hundred and fifty thousand for its administrative service contract with the city. Uh, this contract, again, given that this, uh, budget is approved, the contract does come to the city, goes to the BCIC board and then the city commission for approval, and that's for administrative services, uh, that are provided to the BCIC board. Uh, there is a contingency fund. Uh, last year, the contingency fund had been a hundred thousand. This, this year, the, the fund has been raised to three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five thirty-six. Uh, the fiscal year application prior year was at two hundred and fifty thousand. This year, it's at a hundred thousand. Then we have the debt service, uh, one point, almost one point five million for the bonds. And there's also on line forty, an additional, uh, debt service that we're paying through the COB reimbursement for three hundred and seventy thousand. And then this year, um, you'll see in prior year, we had allocated, BCIC had allocated four hundred thousand. The amount has increased to seven hundred thousand, uh, for the maintenance contract. Again, given the current situation with the city of Brownsville, uh, and the fiscal constraints that have occurred this year with the city, the board felt that it was appropriate to go ahead and increase the amount of funds for maintenance to cover the entire amount that the city of Brownsville has requested to maintain the park for fiscal year 2010. In addition, uh, the potential revenue that they were looking for, or that they are projecting for 2010 is approximately two hundred thousand. And again, given the, uh, fiscal constraints that the city of Brownsville has this year, the board felt that it was best that also stay with the city of Brownsville. Again, so that totals out to three point three million. Are there questions?
Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Doc, you know, one, I guess, you know, one of my, one of my biggest concerns is one, application funding is a hundred thousand, okay? And, um, those funds, how, how much of that hundred, one hundred thousand is gonna go to parks? Not sports park, but to park services. Oliveda, Morningside, you know, the other parks, Gonzales. So parks that need work, you know, because I know you and I have talked about this for the past few years now. You know, we can't even get Oliveda Park resurfaced or some covers in some of the, the, the baseball court areas, I mean, the baseball areas. That's a big concern. I understand it costs quite a bit, and a lot of the money is going into the sports park, which I want to see the job get completed, and we all do, but at the same time, I don't want to shortchange the existing parks from not getting any other amenities that they are in desperate and dire need of because of, of the way we have it budgeted. So out of that one hundred thousand, how much is going to general park services?
Again, at this point in time, and just to give you a little bit of background, uh, from the inception of the corporation up to this point in time, uh, four million dollars has been allocated to the various parks within, uh, the city of Brownsville based on the applications.
Four million out of how much?
Out of, are you talking about the total amount that BCIC has had up to this point? Probably about twenty million.
So four million out of, out of twenty million has gone to other?
To city of Brownsville parks, a total of about, close to ten million.
And the rest of the money, the sixteen million?
Another five million has gone toward, uh, approximately five million has gone toward other projects throughout the city of Brownsville, uh, from the children's museum to.
Mayor.
The zoo.
Doc, but I guess what I'm asking specifically then for the.
And to answer your question specifically.
Yes.
If the board continues to do the same method that they've done every year, there is no way to know at this point in time. Because the BCIC board uses an application process.
Right.
So it's dependent on what application. So it's dependent on what applications are submitted to the BCIC board, and which applications then, through the process, are selected to be funded.
All right.
And historically, then...
Mayor, this is where it works. 4B, you get all these entities, nonprofits, kind of like we're going through with, with the museum, who's going to get the funding, the zoo, Camille Playhouse, who, where are we going to put these funds? Well, these people apply, and they, they're trying to work with the city to get funding. Well, 4B works like that. 4B, you, we have a phase during the months where they all come in and put an application, like, for instance, UTB put in an application for us to fund all their lighting for the new soccer field that they want to build out there. Well, we didn't, we, so we take applications like that, and we have a committee that sits down and says, well, should we be funding UTB's soccer lights? Well, we have city of Brownsville lights that we need to take care of, and stuff like that. We have Palo Alto, we have other entities that come in, or West Brownsville Little League will say, you know what, we need a new concession stand, or the 511...
So the hundred thousand is what is being budgeted, but hasn't been allocated to...
Nothing, nothing.
Specific projects.
And the, the stance we had to take this year is because of the shortfalls, of the revenue falls. Yeah, we'd like to have three hundred thousand dollars out there to give to these little projects and stuff like that, but we also know that we're through, we're, we're not getting the same money we used to get either, so we had to condense and shorten up projects. So a hundred thousand dollars is going to go toward, you know, Convent Air Force, or toward other projects that may arise, and that aren't necessarily the city of Brownsville. You know what I mean? That, that, the money got shorter this year.
No, I understand. And, and I guess my point, Commissioner, is that a hundred thousand is one, it's not enough. Two, if the sports park is projected to bring in, you said two hundred and fifty, this...
Two hundred thousand is what they put in the documents.
Two hundred thousand. Maintenance is seven hundred thousand. Last fiscal year, we, maintenance was four hundred thousand. Why, why elevate it so much? If we expect two hundred to come in, why, why go to seven hundred, right? Why not go five hundred?
Because that money goes to the general fund. Anything that's raised at the, at the parks and rec right now, they're not line, uh, making a line item account to put that money and give it back so we, so you can be less. Everything goes to the general fund. Every director that raises money through their, through our departments, everything goes to the, the general fund. And Pete, just, that's the way he has it. You know, trust me, we try to fight Pete on, hey, look, we're bringing in this money, then we can lower down the, the cost of what you're giving us, but it doesn't work like that, because he needs the money to go in the general fund, because we have bigger issues and bigger problems.
So then you're saying that instead of the four hundred thousand used in, in '09, you now need to increase that by three hundred thousand for budget reasons?
And I'll tell you why, because here you had something budgeted, and our city manager, Charlie Cather, came and fought for this amended budget, because it was putting too much, put too much strain on, on our city parks department. Our maintenance had to go to the sports park a lot this last year, and we're looking at hiring another individual out there, because as this, as the park grows and more things are out there, you need more security, you need more maintenance people, you need more equipment, and, for instance, we're budgeting five thousand dollars to, for fertilizer out there. Well, you gotta fertilize that sports park four to five times a ye, a year, and each time you do that, it's fifteen thousand dollars, not five thousand dollars. So the numbers were wrong, and remember, it was the first year, and, and Delina used numbers that she thought made sense, but when the actuality of the sports park, you need more, uh, people out there running and security, you need somebody out there when, when things are running, so, you know, that's where it's coming from.
Commissioner Samori, you want to say something?
Yes, Commissioner Atkinson, I commend the board's work for the sports park, but we have parks now that are in dire need of help and assistance. We have parks with broken benches. We have a...
The city needs to apply.
Let me finish, please. We have a kickball field on 511 for young ladies that doesn't even have, they don't even have bathrooms. They host tournaments statewide where they're using porta-potties. That's not right.
Oh, I agree.
You know, I mean, I see us going into this phase two of the sports park where we're getting volleyball courts and all this other stuff, when we have parks now that need security too.
And you know what? If you would have paid attention to the last meeting, we voted on...
I know that.
Repairing 511 fields.
I know that, but I just, I'm just making a comment that...
511 was a private venture, I'm sorry. 511 was a private, was a private league.
Yeah.
We took it into the city and basically created a miracle out there for what they had.
Well, they keep asking for help, and they're not getting it.
And they're getting it.
But that was a commitment that they had made. We, we said that we could only do so much.
And you said you need security there. We have Gonzalez Park that needs security as well.
But let me tell you something. The way BCIC works, they would have to submit an application to the board to see we'd want to fund it. Trust me, I would love to give the money to parks, but they have to come up and apply.
And that's why I think Carlos Hernandez was asking for less. City Commission members on that board, because I think they feel like, like more focus being given to one area and not the other. I think that's what I was getting from him, but I don't think he wanted to say that publicly, but I think that's what it was.
I think it has anything to do with this.
I remember the Parks and Rec's budget, they have budget to do maintenance stuff on these parks already. This is just extra. This is like, like, uh, BCIC's like, however you want to put it, besides what Parks and Rec gets in their budget, they have the opportunity to come to our board and apply, just like we renovated Gonzalez Park, that cultural fair. We give them money for that. I mean, it's, it's not something that BCIC, because if we could, look at 4A, has twenty million dollars, but we can't touch them. Why? Because nobody on that board has come up and said, hey, you know, they're helping with the airport, but where's their involvement on the rest of the city and the, and the dire needs that we have, and the, the money that we need to survive? Here you have a board over here that has no, no inclination in wanting to be accountable to the city, and we're just letting them loose, and that twenty million dollars sitting in, in 4A, and we're fighting over whether we want to give a raise to an employer or not. I mean, it's, it's all done wrong. I think because there's commissioners, and Ms. Delina Barera, she's also a city employee, they're more accountable to the city, you know what I mean? They're more, they're working with us more.
But the board is controlled by the city, and that kind of puts everybody else that applies for the funds at a disadvantage. I mean, with three commissioners, it was four, now three commissioners on the board. I don't know.
There's never four commissioners, Mayor.
What is the wish of the commission?
I think my problem, or my question about all of this, is that, I think the sports park's beautiful, but the fact was that 4B was established in the spirit of providing funding for many quality of life issues, not one, and a hundred thousand dollars is very small compared to three million, and you're not going to fund many quality of life issues next year for a hundred thousand dollars.
But you also...
And if the debt service is going to go on for several years, which I believe it is, then those numbers available for other quality of life issues are going to stay low for several years.
Exactly.
And what do you plan to do about that as a corporation?
Well, let me ask, let me say something on that. Do you want, as a commissioner, to put more strain on our city parks, where we might have to cut their budget, while BCIC's assisting the city of Brownsville with helping them pay for maintenance, because they're all city employees?
I think the last thing that should be cut is parks, because parks are for the poorest people among us, and we have a lot of those.
Exactly, and, and that's what I care about.
But there's not much money there...
Okay.
To, to fund anything but the sports park.
But what do you want to fund? That's why these applications, we can fund dolphins on, on Port, Portis, I mean, South Pedro Island. If the application goes through, we can put a fifty thousand dollars towards saving dolphins on the island, whatever, low funds are there, but we have a commitment on our board, and we all, have you heard it, we all work well together, that we, somebody started this sports park, and we got to finish it. We're held accountable in the papers, you know, the, the Brownsville Herald does a poor job in, in providing a positive image of that sports park. It's all been negative. So we're more strained to make sure that things are getting done out there. We're just starting our sand volleyball courts out there. We're trying to put that money and get it done. You know what I mean? We had problems with HUTB out there. They engineered, and, and Ms. Delina, uh, Delina Barera can tell you, a lot of this money that they're asking for for maintenance out there is because of the poor job that was done in engineering and of the built, building of this park. So we have to...
If I may address...
Now, right now, if you go out there, there, there's, there's drainage all wrong, where all the sewage is coming up right in the middle of the, of the, of the, of the softball. That's unexcusable. That's unexcusable why it was like that.
If I may address your question, Commissioner Downe.
Thank you.
If you will note on, and this is one of the issues that was discussed during the board meeting, if you will note in the contingency fund that there is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five thirty-six. So one of the issues that the board members did discuss is that if there were applications, and that would give them the flexibility to possibly look at those particular funds and, and fund any additional projects that may come through, that merit funding for that particular year. So that is why in particular...
I, I hear, I think that's great, but I hear a lot of possible, possible, possibles.
Yeah, why not do it the other way around? If you have three ninety-eight, why don't we just take out a hundred and put it under the, for the projects, and if you don't use the two hundred, well, you know, so be it, but at least it's there. As opposed to saying, well, it's in contingency, and we'll tap into it if we need to. Why, why shouldn't it be the other way around, Doc? You know, if, why are we going to limit, basically, we have a hundred thousand, let's see who comes forward and says, how, you know, we're going to, as it is, if we only have a hundred thousand, we're already going to limit everybody to begin with. Why not think the other way? We have three ninety-eight, let's take in another one hundred and apply that.
I, I think what the idea was, in this case, was to help supplement maintenance of the sports park, other parks, through BCIC, quality of life issues, to be able to maintain quality of life, to have the access, to have the quality of, of, of fields and of equipment out there, so that we can continue to do that. We have a large debt service, unfortunately or fortunately, the cost of the sports park was much more than the people who voted for it originally thought it would be, and now we've got this thing that we have to pay for, and it's a great facility. We have to maintain it, or it's going to fall apart, and the city has a very tight year. We decided to allocate funds so that we could cover the maintenance through BCIC, and the reason was, is because, you know, it was, uh, budget crunching time, was my understanding of, of why the numbers are this way. I would love to see lighting on Linear Park. I would like to see restrooms on Linear Park. I haven't seen that happen in two years that I've been on the commission. I've talked about it, I've talked to Ms. Barera about it, we've talked to other people about it, but it seems like there's no money for some of these things that are, are needed. We need to have the lights on longer at the sports park. I've had many people say, you kill the lights at nine o'clock, or ten o'clock, whenever it is, and it's just starting to get cool enough to go outside and, and walk around. You've got lighting, you've got all sorts of other issues, and, at least for me, the reason that we came up with this budget, based on my conversations with Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Barera, was because we needed to fund this, and that would be maintenance. Uh, yes, there's lots of other things that we'd like to do, and downtown revitalization, and all sorts of sidewalks, and, and all these things are necessary, but it becomes a question of where's the money? And I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes. I don't like paying taxes, and it becomes a question of where do we get the funds? And this is how we came up with it.
But let me also add to him, that there's projects out there right now. We, we've, we're, we're into three years of, uh, funding the, our, what's that, uh...
Brownsville Botanical Gardens?
Botanical Gardens. There's like eight or nine, ten projects that we have going right now, we're paying for it. We're, we're paying for all these entities right now, Table Palms, uh, Palo Alto, there's so many projects right now on our books, and we, some of them are like ending in December, so that's going to be money that's freed up, you understand? So at the end of the, at the end of the, the, the year, we might have three or four projects that we don't have to pay no more, so now we can put that toward other funding. So you, you say a hundred thousand, but it, it could be in December that we finish paying off, uh, the, the botanical gardens. We won't have to put money every month into that, like, we're, we're into right now. There's like ten to fifteen projects that we are funding. It's not just the Brownsville Sports Park.
Okay. What is the wish of the commission regarding this budget?
I would have moved to acknowledge the, the budget for 2010 for the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to take a hundred thousand out of contingency.
No, there's a motion, there's a motion, second.
Well, there's a discussion, though, and that's what I'm discussing. I, I'd like to...
What is the motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, that we take out, we remove a hundred thousand from contingency fund and add it to the fiscal year application funding.
Let me tell you something. It's a nonprofit corporation. It's a nonprofit corporation, you would need to go present yourself to the board to ask for that. You can't just make that...
You're not recognized. We have a second here to...
No, we have a motion first, Mayor.
I'm not trying to be out of place, Commissioner.
And we're the ones who asked for the motion.
My train of thought is to make an amendment to your motion to take out a hundred thousand from contingency funds and place that under the fiscal year application funding, if it's legally possible. Which I don't see why it wouldn't be.
I'm afraid it's not.
Why not?
The BCIC budget is something that the director has set, and I, I think this commission can approve it or reject it.
We approve it, we can acknowledge it or not acknowledge it?
Or you, yeah.
Okay, so their motion takes precedence.
Yes.
Well, can I, a question?
Well, I mean, a motion to, a motion to amend normally takes procedural precedence, but what I'm saying is that the BCIC board is the one that sets the budget.
We're not an advisory board.
Let him speak.
And what the City Commission does is either approve, acknowledge it or not acknowledge it. If, if the commission does not acknowledge it, they would have to submit an amended budget that they would vote on, but that would be the proceeding.
So then my amendment cannot work, then?
It is not, it would not be a lawful act of the commission.
Then I'd like to restate my amendment, if this budget can go back to 4B board, and if they could consider taking out a hundred thousand from contingency and put that into the, uh, funding of the applications for 2010.
I think we have to decide whether to acknowledge or not, that's what we're saying.
No, you would decide on the amendment to the motion. You would vote on the amendment first.
It's an action, not a reclamation.
If the amendment passes, then it would pass. If the amendment fails, you would vote on the main motion.
So we have a motion to amend and a second?
Second.
What, wait a minute, what of our, our motion? And I'm telling you right now, this agenda item shouldn't have been placed like that for action. It's an acknowledgement, and that's it, and she knows that. She knows that, but she didn't like how we voted, so she came this route. You can't have it both ways. You know, if, we have a board that is not an advisory board, it's a board of, it's like telling the Brownsville Visits, uh, Brownsville Convention Visitors Board that they can't spend a hundred thousand this way. Are we going to be now micromanaging that board? A lot of us are coming out for that. You want to sit on that board, and go sit on that board, and then you can mess with the numbers when you get there.
Commissioner, I'm making, I'm making a recommendation, based on what's being presented here today.
Okay, this is wrong.
And that's, well, that's my recommendation.
It's wrong.
Okay, we're going to follow the attorney's...
The, the, the motion on the floor is to, to approve it. I mean, your motion is simply to reject it, which is just the opposite of what the motion on the floor is, actually.
No, he's making a recommendation.
I made an amendment for that, for the, for the, I made an amendment so that this goes back to their board.
He said procedurally, that has precedence.
The motion to amend has precedence.
And that's what I did. That was my motion.
So the motion, so the amended motion on the floor would simply be to...
Amend the budget?
Well, not to, would be to reject, would be to reject it and send it back to the BCIC board.
Well, that's my motion, then, to reject it and send it back to 4B.
Is that an amendment?
That's not an amendment, that's a rejection. I mean, so, I mean, you, you...
Is that an amendment?
I'm completely confused, because the motion was to approve, and then we had discussion. Commissioner Camarillo said that he had an amendment, then he found out he couldn't amend, so he has to reject in order to send it back. So the motion on the floor, my understanding, what would make sense to me would be that we vote to either approve, if that doesn't pass, then we come back and we can vote to see what happens. So you voted to approve it, I seconded it. Can we vote on that issue?
According to him, he said his, his motion has procedural precedence.
His, his, his motion has two parts. First of all, he's motioning, he's moving to reject it, which is just the opposite of what Commissioner Atkinson voted, which is the same motion, but he's actually, he added, he's adding an instruction, that it, that, that there be an instruction sent back.
I'm going to rule, I'm going to go by their motion first, okay, because he changed[1671.23] Because he changed it, he changed it from a procedural, uh, amendment, now to rejection. So you can't have it both ways here. So we're gonna, we're gonna have a vote on, on the, uh, existing motion made by Commissioner Atkinson, and seconded by Commissioner Trieran. Those who want to accept the recommended budget, vote yea, and those who do not, vote nay. And then it goes back, if, if it's nay, for, for, uh, bringing it back for the day.
And, and can I say something?
Do we have a vote? Let's just vote, let's not talk.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
To acknowledge.
To acknowledge, that's what I said.
There must be action.
Any further discussion?
Actually, okay, I can-
Okay, that is plain and simple. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay.
Nay. How many nays?
Four. Goes back.
Four nays, so it goes back. Okay, bring it back, with the consideration maybe of-
Do we need to make a motion to recommend that they consider-
No, it's not on here.
It's not on here.
You can't tell the BCIC board how to vote, how to do what's-
They never have the message, they got the message, they can go back and work on it, to bring it back to where it was.
And you know, I'd like to say something, I'm very disappointed with the way this went down, 'cause it's, it's illegal.
I, I, my concern is that, that the BCIC has turned into, uh, mainly a sports park. And I think there's more part of life needs here in Brownsville than sports parks, even though the sports park is a great asset, and we do support it. But I think by having too many commissioners on that board-
Having too many commissioners has nothing to do with it, Pat.
It, it, what you're, what you're trying to do is trying to inject yourself, like if four A wanted to approve, what do we approve with UTB?
I just wanted to adjust the budget, that's all I wanted to do.
Why not amend it to two hundred thousand?
Just wanted to adjust it.
Next item, please.
That's wrong, Camarillo.
Item eleven, consideration and possible action to enter into a contractual license agreement with the Brownsville Farmers Market at Linear Park.
I make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, but Commissioner Longoria, any discussion?
I do.
Yes.
I would like to amend this one, and to say that if by January two thousand ten, they could not, uh, fundraise, or ask entities like, like the Valley Baptist Hospital, or Valley Regional Hospital, that can provide funds for this, I'm totally with what you wanna do, but you gotta go out and fundraise, you gotta go out and get something like all these other, uh, museums and arts are doing, to, to at least show the city that you have, uh, a commitment from other entities, and get fundraising. I mean, we, we raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, just in a golf tournament for the city manager, for the youth of Brownsville. I, I don't see, with all the law professors and all the, the faculty at UTB, can't go raise ten thousand dollars to fund this.
Commissioner, if you haven't heard the presentations that have been made before the commission, months-
You, you're-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Commissioner.
You, hold on, I was talking, I was talking.
If you had not heard, the presentation made by Farmers Market, months ago-
Commissioner Camarillo, a chance for-
The presentation made months ago, you'd see all the sponsors that they currently have, and all the people that are helping to make the organi- organization function. So to say that they haven't sought funds, or gone out to the public, or other individuals, is incorrect.
Where's all that money?
It goes into the makeup of the market.
It goes into the whole organization and what they're trying to do. Uh, so, I, I understand what you're saying, not, not everybody should be coming to the city for money, but you know what? This is an organization that actually has given back to the city, given back to the community, the people that need it the most. They're not just here saying, well, we wanna play a game, and we wanna, we wanna learn how to play this game, and so we're gonna make this money for ourselves. They don't. Again, it's a not-for-profit, that's the difference.
I see why you have to fight for this, because where it's coming from, UTB, you worked there.
No, 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 Commissioner, this has nothing to do with that.
Yes, it does, yes, it is.
It is not UTB, there's a difference between UT and B and UT School of Public Health, and this is not that either.
I would like to amend it, to say, go back, try to raise funds, so we don't, so the city of Brownsville doesn't have to incur those ten thousand dollars. It's like, now we're gonna get some brofests, we want fifteen thousand dollars, because we're bringing heads in beds. Give me fifteen thousand dollars.
Let's vote on your amendment.
Commissioner Gallin?
Uh, I know you haven't gone to the previous presentations, and there are many entities that have given money. Valley Baptist gave five thousand, they were our largest donor. I don't agree with the funding for the sports park, but I didn't go back and tell you, you ought to go fundraise for it.
Exactly.
The, is that orderly, is that legal?
I don't order, that, the chair's already on the table.
I don't have a problem with not asking the city for money, if the money was there. And if you wanna amend it, to say that after January, if it's still necessary, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that, because that's not, that is when we asked for it last year. We didn't use it until January of oh nine. So that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, let, let, let me say something here, and with all due respect, I think this is a great, uh, project. But I have problems with it, not only because the obvious to me, that you were, this is your pet project, and you were involved in it.
The sports park was commissioned as a-
But it's for the city, I don't get nothing out of that.
Wait a second, I don't order.
I represent the city of Brownsville, the sports park, you can't, you're not profit to sports park.
Commissioner Atkinson, please.
Oh my god.
The market doesn't change, Commissioner.
Everybody has an opinion here, and everybody has, will be heard, okay? Everybody will be heard, okay? And let's do it respectfully, and we can agree to disagree. And with all due respect, I think this is a private venture, and the city has no business funding these private ventures. That's my opinion. Uh, I'm very, very involved with Brownsville Pulse, which I, 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 I founded. I didn't ask the city for ten thousand dollars. And I think we're opening the door for others to come in and ask for money on these type of projects. Just because we're commissioners or mayor, involved, and are trying to do something, make things better, that doesn't entitle us to get funding from the city. And that's just my opinion, uh, because, I, I mean, I work in conjunction directly with the city, to rescue pets, find adoption, uh, spay and neuter, and all that stuff. But we don't ask for money, we go out and raise money, and we have golf tournaments, and, and raffle tickets, and all that stuff. So I think it sets a bad precedent, but that's my opinion, whatever the wishes of the commission are, I just think that this is not a good idea, especially coming from one of us that sits on this board.
You know, Commissioner, each of us, at one point, decides to focus on an issue that benefits the community. What's really unfortunate is that, you know, here we are, talking about helping individuals better their lifestyles, educating youth, again, doing things, changing the culture, no, you are, because you're saying that, you know, here you wanted one, one point three dollars for the animals, that didn't happen. And so, you know, here we are today, but you know what? This is helping the people that need it the most. I mean, this is a great, great program. How, why are we gonna shoot down a, a, an entity that is trying to do something for the youth, and to change the culture in this community that needs some change? That is, that's all where I'm coming from, I'm not, I'm not getting anything from this.
Exactly, neither am I.
But I know, but again, I know, that with little the city invested, it has helped many families. And sometimes, we don't see that, and we don't see it in that, in that perspective, but Commissioner, that's what it's doing.
But you're gonna get a thousand to two thousand people who have the same belief, that they can, uh, rescue the city of Brownsville from diabetes, and, 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 uh, uh, you know, helping the poor. You're gonna get more, are you gonna, are you gonna be willing to put ten thousand dollars or more so, to all these entities that are coming, nonprofits that are gonna come in and say, my cause was just as good as this one? And you're gonna say no? Are you gonna say no? Are you gonna say no?
And the difference, Commissioner, is that this is a private venture, this is not a city venture.
It's not.
The, the, you, you referred to the animal shelter, that's a city entity. We're helping the, the, the city. This, this, and this is coming from our pockets. We're not asking the city to give us money. So there's a difference, there's a big distinction here.
I would like to volunteer myself to help you raise this ten thousand dollars, I will do that.
But, you know, what are the wishes of the commission, and respectfully, everybody has their opinion, and, and, you know, the majority wants to go with this, I, you know, that's-
Well, I made the motion, Mayor, I don't know if you wanna go to the vote, but I-
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but-
I'm, Mayor, I'm gonna withdraw my second.
You withdraw your second? Okay, so do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, Commissioner Samaras, second, sir. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One aye?
Three.
Nay? No, wait a second, how many ayes, raise your hand. Three, okay. I mean, nays?
Nay.
Okay, you got four ayes.
Four ayes.
Nay?
Nay?
Okay, now let's move on, okay? And it's not personal, it's just our, our opinions, or being wishful. Okay, next item. Next item?
Item twelve, consideration and possible action regarding approval of agreement for joint participation between the city and private developers regarding the planning, design, and construction of West Morrison Road.
Thank you for your patience, uh, Mr. Sanchez, but, you know, maybe, uh, you saw government work firsthand, you learned something from it. Or you appreciate us a little more.
Appreciate everybody's patience. So the sentence is not here, so I, I was gonna play Morrison Road, then. This is an issue of West Morrison Road. Uh, Morrison Road, the total sum of Morrison Road is, is a major arterial that has been-
Do you have a map here or not?
If you do. That has been proclaimed so by, uh, the MPO, uh, and it, it would run from, actually, five eleven to Alton Glor, eventually. Now, what we're here today is to discuss West Morrison Road, and, uh, Mr. Sanchez is here to offer a presentation in relation to the developer, uh, aspect of West Morrison Road. We have no contract with them, so what he wants to do is, is discuss the idea of how to fund West Morrison Road. What we need to do is go back to the drawing board, and get some general policy in relation to how we're gonna work with developers, and create a policy to bring back to you later on. The idea is for the city not to suffer any un, unusual amount of funding, uh, resources to, to implement to this project. Obviously, Tech Dot has not, has had a big issue in, 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 uh, funding this project. We have worked with Mr. Sanchez and other developers, to try to find financial resources to get this done. Obviously, it does need to get done, uh, not only for, uh, what he's proposing, which is a, uh, development-type scenarios in, in those, in those isolated areas, but we need an east-west corridor to, uh, help us with the traffic congestions that are gonna cause us severe problems in the future, Alton Glor, Highway seventy-seven, expressways, and things like that. So I'll turn, yes, sir?
Charlie, one quick note, the city, city a few years back issued bonds, how, how much were the bonds for the west and east Morrison? I know we were gonna divide that equally, it was, uh-
Well, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna divide it equally, or if we wanna divide it equally, and actually, the budget this year, we, we proposed to break up that, uh, and utilize some of that money-
Okay.
In, in the next coming budget.
But that was how much?
But we, we have done, we, we did things, uh, to try to accelerate this project. Uh, for example, uh, uh, we worked through, uh, with environmental studies, and we hired a firm to do environmental studies for the east and west loop, to do the environmental prerequisites for Tech Dot. Uh, we, we built some temporary roads out there to allow, uh, development, and that has secured, uh, the east side of Morrison Road, from the frontage road to Pablo Quiselle. And, uh, when we saw that Tech Dot was having financial issues in relation to funding these projects, we did go out on a bond for five million dollars, of which we have most of it, uh, secured. We have, uh, done some, uh, purchase, I mean, some relocation, uh, of funding to some of the, uh, mobile homes that were relocated sometime back, when Target was built there. But, but we most, we have most of the money in place right now, uh, but we are going to, uh, work with, uh, bond council in restructuring some of that money.
It's my understanding, Charlie, and, and, um, let me know if I'm incorrect, that the west Morrison part, that, 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 that development cost, that, that development, the total cost is, I think, five million, is that correct? Just to do the west Morrison?
It's, it's one point seven miles of-
I'm sorry, it's four million?
One point seven miles of construction. Well, that's what Mr. Sanchez can propose now, is four million, but that's taking away some of the proposed, uh-
Well, we're gonna include the, uh-
Well, yeah.
We're gonna include the sidewalks, we're gonna include-
When you start including sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, you're gonna get back to six million dollars.
Okay. Now, but we had set aside-
We don't wanna put in more roads without sidewalks. I mean, I, I don't think that-
I mean, and, and especially in the west side, because, I mean, that's, that's residential, you're gonna see a lot of small businesses going in there. And I guess, going back to the bond issue, I know we had said we'd do two point five, minus ninety west, and then two point five east. And to hopefully kinda make all this work, because of the, the amount of growth, just in schools alone. And granted, you know, the, the housing development, it's, it's not, it's a little bit stagnant right now, but hopefully that'll increase. You know, my concern, Charlie, was if there was any way possible, to take what we had set aside for east, since, it's my understanding, there's a lot of other issues there, and apply some of those funds, so we can get this, this job done.
You're asking me if that's possible?
Yes.
Well, I guess it is possible. Okay, I don't know if it's recommendable, but it's possible. And we, we have gotten some good input from Tech Dot in relation, uh, to the east side, uh, and possibly getting a near market that's been in place for a while, and things like that. But, but understand that east, east side of Morrison was the most expensive part of this project, because of the, uh, drainage dishes, we had to do some, uh, work on.
Let me ask a question, let me ask you, see, on the east side, Charlie, we've talked about it, we've met with, uh, Salmore Ortiz's office, we've met with Eddie Lucials, that east side Morrison was shovel-ready, right? We're, we're waiting, we had, what, seven million dollars, ready to come, be, uh, given by Tech Dot to get this thing funded? What is it gonna do now, once they see that we're gonna try to commit to the west side? Does, does that east side now get prolonged now, or, I mean, what are we-
Our conversations with Tech Dot is, they basically have broken, broken up into saying, uh, we may get funding for east Morrison, not west. But right now, right now, all indic-, all indications from Tech Dot, and from talking to, uh, our elected officials, is that, that, is that east side is what's gonna be proposed to be funded in the, in the near future, maybe even next fiscal year. So with, the, the hope for east is there, the hope for west is not there. We're looking maybe four, five, six, maybe even ten years down the road.
Why wouldn't we put money into the west side, if we're almost there on the east side? And we might have to put in funds on the east side. I mean, I mean, what I've talked to you is that-
If Tech Dot, if Tech Dot does east side, we're talking, uh, we're talking, they do ninety percent of the project, ninety percent of the cost of the project, because, uh, that's the agreement we have with them. And we've already paid for environmental studies, et cetera.
Exactly.
So we might have already put in our percentage, so that, it might not, it might be that if everything works out correctly, we have that project already paid for, and we don't have to invest any of our funding into that, into the east side of Morrison.
Charlie, my concern is, I, I don't think the west Morrison can wait four years. Again, the schools, they're already gonna go up, okay? That, that, I mean, that, that's gonna be a done deal. The growth is already there. You know, you know, my, my whole concern is also, is that Alton Glor is supposed to get torn up, and that's supposed to be expanded. So when Tech Dot goes in and does that project, we didn't even touch Morrison yet, because we're saying that we're gonna get funded on east, which we don't know yet. Yet, you know, we're ready to go on the west side. Alton Glor gets torn up, what happens then? I mean, what, what access are gonna be available to the public that living, as it is, is overcrowded, just because of the schools alone?
Our, our urgency is to get this east-west done, and you're correct, and that's for, that's the reason that we went and, went and got a bond. That's the reason we've done environmental studies, uh, the environmental work, and, and helped Tech Dot move along. We, we, we presented that to the commission years ago, and the, the commission agreed for us to do these things, to get Tech Dot moving on the project. And you're correct, we have done studies in relation to traffic congestion on Alton Glor, uh, even Merriman Road, uh, Pablo Quiselle, eight oh two. We are going to face heavy, heavy traffic congestion in those streets, if not now, in the immediate future. So, yes, that's what we wanna do, we wanna get this road done.
I'd ju- just let the people know out there that he's on one side of expressway, and I'm on the other side of expressway. So we're, he's gonna fight for the west, I'm gonna fight for the east, because they're both very important roads that need to get done. But, you know, we've talked to, to the importance of opening up schools in, or more, some, BISD wants to open up a school out around Brownsville Country Club. They can't, because we're telling them no, because we don't have the, the, we'll have the congestion. Eight oh two is backed up, Alton Glor is backed up on the, on the east side, Boca Chica is backed up on the east side. Fifteen-minute waits in these, in our, in our town. So, you know, I, I understand the importance of your side, but our side's very important also, and, you know, I'd like to see what this is gonna cause. There's gonna be a holdup on what we're trying to do with the east?
It's not, there's not gonna be a holdup, but I think there's a solution here.
No, all indications are-
I think if we listen to the plan, you're gonna find that it's acceptable, and I think everybody agrees. On the east side, we're already working on that through the MPO, we're waiting for some change in legislation from the Congress or these, to qualify for Tech Dot monies. But right now, let's focus on the west Morrison, which is not gonna affect the east Morrison. Dennis, you wanna, you wanna tell us what the plan is?
I'll be, try to be brief. Uh, we started on this about six years ago, trying to get West Morrison Road built. At that time, the developer had the money to build all of West Morrison Road, from Military Highway over to the express. It was gonna cost two million dollars. At that time, the city said, don't do it, Tech Dot's gonna pay for it. Year after year after year, Tech Dot kept putting it back, putting it back, putting it back. The last estimate for West Morrison Road, prepared by your engineers, was seven million bucks. Now, and what, what do you do to get around that? It's very clear that, that Tech Dot is never gonna put any money on West Morrison Road, they've said so. And they've even said, if we ever do build West Morrison Road, it'll be in the year two thousand and fifteen. So, the city, on its own, went out and got five million dollars of bonding, approved. And there was also two million dollars approved by the federal government for east Morrison Road. So it was a total of seven million dollars, up until about two or three months ago. And I understand that there's some budget issues, that maybe some of that five million dollars has now been earmarked for something else, but up to about ninety days ago, there was five million dollars. The, there's two roads that you see there, the red one is the west Morrison Road, the, uh, blue one is what they call Loretto Road. The developer is willing to pay the one point six billion dollars to put in the blue road, Loretto Road, at its own expense. Uh, we've met and talked with-
What's the total cost, Dennis, so that people can understand?
One point six million.
No, but the total cost of the project?
For Loretto Road, one point six million.
Okay, I thought you were talking about Morrison, okay.
But that's not Morrison Road, that's Loretto Road, right?
The blue one is Loretto Road.
Right, and I guess that's my point, we're talking about Morrison Road, and that's great, the developer wants to put in Loretto Road, but we're worried about-
Right, I'm trying to, I'm trying to show you what, who's putting in what. The developer's putting in the one point six. Now, the, the cost of west Morrison Road's been pared down to four million dollars, which is, based on Tech Dot standards, it was, uh, designed by your engineers. And, um, under a section- And under a section three eighty agreement under the local government code, you can, the city and a developer can join together and.
You can have a public-private?
Make a public-private venture for building improvements. The developers have one million dollars to apply also to west Morrison Road. And they're willing to pay another million dollars if they're given enough opportunity to do so under sort of like a paving assessment type thing. Basically, there's not enough cash in the, available to the developers to come up with on a fifty-fifty basis of two million, two million. There's just not there.
I don't know that, I mean, personally, I don't know that I'd wanna put the city in a position where we're spending more than fifty percent and I think we'd wanna get our money back, or a portion of our money back as well.
Well, he has.
And that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
That's exactly what I'm suggesting. If the developers could put in the one million dollars and the city could go ahead, put in the three million dollars, but make an assessment against the literal, the landowners along, along the west Morrison Road, when, and either put it on a timeframe or on a first, either, you know, the first of the, of something to occur, either three years or four years, or the sale of the property, then that proportionate should would be paid back as, you know, like a paving assessment. That would work. That's the.
So you're putting up three point six million? One point, one point six?
Two point six.
Okay, two point six, one point six for Loretto Road and another million for west Morrison.
So we don't wanna talk about Loretto Road because that's something that would.
Commissioner.
Okay, let's just talk about west Morrison. We got one million dollars for west Morrison Road and takes four million dollars to build.
Yeah, but you're also willing to do an assessment of the fifty percent that would come from the property owners around.
Yes.
Out of the four million. So, I think you're contributing in all total with the landowners, that's two, three point six million?
Well, they've also given the right of way, which is another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for west Morrison Road. So.
So that's three point nine fifty?
So that's more that they're putting up. They didn't, the city didn't come in and condemn it, didn't pay the landowners for it, they're contributing the west Morrison right of way.
And the city, when we went out for the, when we did the five million, we had set aside two point five would go to the west, two point five would go to the east. And so the makeup, the difference we're looking at is five hundred thousand.
And here, here the, the advantage is that the property, property values will increase, our overall tax assessments will increase and our revenue will increase.
Well, I think.
You would have.
I think with the exception of yourself mayor, everybody on this council was behind Imagine Brownsville. Am I correct?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. And you look at what is the top priority of Imagine Brownsville, on the infrastructure?
Gotta have cross traffic.
You know what it is? East-west roads.
Gotta have cross traffic.
Now, if you go to El Tejon or where you, Alton Glor, you try to, try to go, get to the freeway at eight o'clock in the morning, you can't do it.
And the NPO supports that, not just Imagine Brownsville, the NPO supports that.
Okay, so this is the only game in town. There was a man here, Mr. Ruiz, I think was talking, yes, it is a dream, we're trying to make it a reality and that's all we can do. Everybody's, everybody's tight for cash, the city is, people are, everybody in this room is tight for cash right now. So what we're trying to do is what, under difficult situation, what's the best thing to do? And, and I'm proposing a fifty-fifty split, but as I've said, the developers only have the million dollars and they, they're willing to pay the other million dollars under some sort of arrangement that we can make with the city for payback, either by way of assessment, lien, or whatever.
For healthy growth, you need, you need roads.
Can I ask a question?
You have the floor.
When I, when I spoke to Mr. Kabler earlier, he indicated that possibly there wouldn't be any sidewalks. And then there was an issue as to some of the other, you know, requirements for the road that would get it down to that four million. And you're saying that it's met the specs for the engineers, does it include all the requirements that would normally be met? I mean, I don't know, and so that's my question.
We've got NPO to take care and they could speak to that, but I can tell you, we did speak about the issue of sidewalks. Sidewalks along, and basically it's gonna be another eight oh two. You don't see any sidewalks on eight oh two.
Well, actually there are, there's on the north and south, yeah, there are.
Well, not, not, not in the commercial areas, because in the commercial areas, they, if there is a sidewalk, they tear them out and make them rebuild it after they put in their improvements. So, all they need to do is require that when you come in and you build, then you're gonna have to put your sidewalk on. That's the same thing that they do in residential areas. You know, you come in, you plat a residential subdivision, then you have to put in the sidewalks after you platted out. And so, again, this is gonna be, I believe, a seventy-five foot wide road. It's gonna be, have five lanes, it's gonna have those islands to.
Median.
Medians. And the, the things that were cut were sidewalks and I believe the landscaping.
Is that right, Lester? That's right? Commissioner Gallin?
Will it have a bike lane? I'm sorry?
Bike lanes would cut.
How wide is your?
It's, it may be maximum that has a controlled access median, just like eight oh two.
There's a shoulder on eight oh two, isn't there?
Yes.
Will it have that?
No, that's a bike lane. A controlled access median, just like eight oh two is.
So it'll be narrower than eight oh two?
Same width as eight oh two, but median is wider.
Okay, the median's wider?
Why not make the median smaller?
It's a matter of course.
Shoulders are about another four hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Four or five thousand.
For shoulders.
In lieu of medians?
Yeah, in lieu of medians. Why, why, the commission here can then request that you do the bicycle shoulder there instead of the medians, can it not? And then assess that to the property owners, the portion of it?
And it's a bicycle, I mean, if you have a bike lane, you're just looking at space and painting a stripe on the pavement, correct? So, I guess, I mean, what, what kind of cost would that be? You know, if you remove the median and you put the, put the bike lane, I mean.
There's some redesign costs in that.
Okay.
Also disconstruction.
Okay.
Would they offset each other? You get rid of the median, would that more compensate for the bike lane?
Median's just a landscape area. The bike lane's gonna be a paved area, which is.
Okay, but Dennis, the share of the developer could be tacked onto the assessment, for the bike lane?
If that's what the council decides, yes, but then, the fact is, we're limited by how much cash we have. Not on how much we're willing to absorb by way of participation, but our cash requirements are limited to a million bucks.
I understand that, but we all have the plan.
An extra four hundred thousand dollars and each side has to pay.
That additional amount.
So be it.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm saying.
Well, can you bring, I think, two, I mean, at our next meeting, can you bring two plans? Give us the bike lane without the median and then versus the median without the bike lane and see what the cost is? That way we can figure out how we're gonna incorporate that.
Let me ask something, one at a time, Commissioner Trani?
I guess the question I have and more has to do with the nuts and bolts of the agreement because, I mean, I don't wanna put the city in a position where we're paying, you know, if we get stimulus money or we get some other funds, I don't wanna see the city paying more than half of the project. And if we can reduce our half based on other funding, we wanna do that because we don't wanna have to spend more taxpayer money on this. If it's gonna be, you know, public-private venture, we'd sure like to see, obviously you've got all this landlocked area over here. Once you put that road in, that's gonna develop it for the landowners. Because right now, I mean, obviously we need to cross town traffic, but at the same time, you're increasing the value of all the property there. It's gonna benefit the developers, it's gonna benefit. It's gonna benefit everybody, but I'd kinda like to see more of the payment towards the individuals who are gonna directly benefit from it.
In what respect?
Well, in the respect that if the city can reduce, if the city can reduce its share through other monies, that we pay no more than fifty percent, and if we can reduce that because there's stimulus money or some other money available, then, then we have that option, not that the city's gonna pay fifty percent outright towards this.
If Tech Dot, I'm sorry, and Dennis, I don't know who can answer this, if Tech Dot would not fund west Morrison and if they ever did or they considered it being twenty fifteen, what are the chances that we're gonna get stimulus monies to work on this project?
Unlikely.
Unlikely, correct?
We talked about it, we addressed it in the contract, it said that if there is.
I haven't seen the contract.
A refund from Tech Dot, because it is being built to Tech Dot standards, then that money would be, it would flow back proportionately.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Dennis, to me, it's not, it's not for discussion or an option. I wanna see a bicycle lane because I think that's, we need to be following the same criteria as all the main arteries where there are bicycle lanes for people to use. That's one, okay? The other is that, that the developers pay fifty percent and all the developers are in agreement to the cash portion, whatever it's gonna be. And the assessment to make up that fifty percent, no matter how it's worked out as far as the repayment, whether it's when they sell the lot or over a period of time, whatever. To me, it makes no difference as long as they pay that fifty percent. Now, whatever the city does to come up with its fifty percent, that's its business. It doesn't, it doesn't apply no credits to the developers, should we get more money or anything else for our, for our construction?
If we get paid back, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, right?
Right. Okay. To me, that's, that's all I want, and I think it's a good deal. Because it's gonna increase our revenues through the development and property taxes.
Let me ask something. The, the road, would it have to go through the city to see who paves it? Through the city decides who paves this road?
No, sir, under a section three eighty agreement, and that's really the reason why we're saving so much money here is because you can, when you deal directly with a private contractor, it's a lot cheaper than going through the normal bidding process. And it's proven itself historically. And in this instance, the way the contract's prepared is that all of the money is being handled by your engineer, your engineering company, not.
And meet our specs and everything else.
We put our money into your engineer's account and they spend it out of there.
So we can move this along, Dennis, city manager, can we hear from you? Do you feel comfortable with this proposal? Be honest. With the proposal? The city staff recommend this?
We need to prepare a general policy in relation to how we're gonna work. And not, we shouldn't even discuss Morrison Road right now, we should discuss a policy and how we're gonna work with developers in, in, in share in the cost of building roads through assessments and things like that.
Yeah.
So the city's assured that we put in our fair share and so do they.
Charlie, let me say this, may I?
Wait a second.
So until we have a general policy in place, we shouldn't have any deal.
Okay, but that's not what it says right here.
Exactly.
That's what it says right here, I'm sorry.
Well, move the table.
Commissioner Samora?
Well, I did have a motion that addresses that, if I may state it.
Okay. Before, before we go anywhere else, let me hear from the other commissioners.
Okay.
Well, I would say, look, the problems that we had with Pablo Quecel, we're just trying to make sure it doesn't happen again. And, and I'm right, I've talked to Charlie Kabler about this and this is a great, great thing what you're doing, but we don't have anything, I know Commissioner Samora and other commissioners are real big on contracts and policies and, and what exactly the city's gonna get. At this point, we don't know what the city, what, what, what's at stake and what's committed to the city. We don't have that, and I don't see how we can approve that right now.
The item here before is very specific. So let me hear from the city.
Gentlemen, if I may, and lady commissioners. The mayor's right, there is no contract directly before you. However, I would submit that it would be perfectly acceptable for you to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract along certain parameters and bring it back to the city commission for final approval. What the city manager talked about is guidelines or procedure for dealing with developers for improvement of public roads for these joint venture projects which are set forth in three eighty of the Texas Local Government Code. We've been working on it and I have submitted to each of you a draft of that document, which is, and I'd like to, and I'd like to basically to, to set out the high points because I think it addresses Commissioner Trani, your concern, and I think some of the other concerns that were raised. Let's take this one at a time. First of all, what type of projects should the city commission consider for three eighty projects? One, they should be basically eligible projects as defined by the transportation improvement projects as designated by the city and set forth by the NPO. We don't need to be developing private roads except roads that are important to the city, such as the east-west quarter, which is a subject of this project. Second of all, we talked about, I think one of the, the mayor, you voiced some concern about what happens if we get some economic stimulus monies. Let's say the city of Brownsville made for eligible projects, and it is sole discretion contribute up to fifty percent of the qualified cost of the project. Federal and state sources such as economic stimulus monies shall count toward the city contribution. So the developers won't, they have to pay their fair share of fifty percent of the project. What costs should be borne? They should only be qualified costs and those should be limited to the actual costs of right-of-way acquisition, of planning, of design, of engineering and construction of the public roadways. Now, you're right, the Loretto Road has nothing to do with this. And I think that the city, if it's going to adopt a policy, it should be a fair, equitable policy, something that could be uniform and applied for everyone. And I think that equity.
But if they're throwing in that money to upgrade that road, who are we to say no?
Oh, I'm not saying no, but what I'm saying is, let's look at west Morrison Road. But what's being proposed here is really a fifty-fifty split, which is fair. And I think what we can do is we can require developers to pay fifty percent, but if they are short, what we can do is we can have, we can allow the city to advance monies, but get that back through assessment and deeds of trust. So in effect, it is a fifty-fifty split for the west Morrison Road project. So.
There's no interest on that, right? It's just straight cost assessment?
Well, I think frankly, I think we should have some interest, otherwise we're gonna give someone an indefinite loan into the future.
It could be twenty, thirty years out before you get it back.
Correct, so there has to be, so there has to be some reasonable interest placed on it. But what I would, what I would ask, and I think it's appropriate, for the city commission to authorize the city manager to negotiate this contract along these parameters as set forth and bring it back to the city commission for final approval.
That's my motion.
Okay, this has been a long one. And I think, I think everybody has a reading this in minds here, can we have a motion please?
I move to allow the city manager to negotiate a contract with property owners for west Morrison Road, pursuant to guidelines proposed by council but subject to final approval from the city commission.
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Mark, and I guess at the next meeting you'll have this, not in draft format, for us to adopt?
Yes, this was something that came up.
No, I know. I appreciate it, thanks.
Item thirteen, consideration in action on interlocal agreement with University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas Southmost College, regarding the installation of a traffic signal light at the intersection of University Boulevard and Ringel Road.
I'm hoping this will be an easy one. We wanna put up the traffic light at University Boulevard and Ringel Road. The cost, so far the low bid is around a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And it's an interlocal agreement where the university will reimburse us for the cost of purchasing the light and the installation of the light.
So nobody should argue this that? Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry.
A motion.
Just clarify. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Let me have a second, we'll open up a discussion.
I'm gonna have somebody else second this one.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Samora, now, somebody wanna say something?
I just wanted to ask a question. We are gonna get reimbursed for this through the, through the interlocal?
Yeah.
For the installation and?
Now, the university hasn't approved the interlocal agreement, it goes to the university Thursday for their approval.
So it hasn't been approved yet?
Then I'll make my motion to settle to approval.
Yeah, if it's approved by the university, if you all approve it tonight and it's approved by the university Thursday, then, you know, what'll happen is when the stoplight is put up, the university will cut us a check.
Commissioner Trani, basis of motion subject to approval. Yeah, okay, I'll second that. We got second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next item, please?
Item fourteen, consideration in action to approve resolution number two thousand and nine dash zero fifty, authorizing the city of Brownsville to partner with a convention and visitors bureau and develop a tourism industry-specific convention and visitors bureau advisory board.
Okay, I place this item on the agenda because our current contract is up for renewal and because the current contract is only one page and upon state review and attorney review, it's probably grossly inept. So this would be the best time. review, it's probably grossly inept, so this would be the best time to place some standards and guidelines to propose for a new contract, and that's what I'm aiming to do with this current resolution, establishing particular policies and procedures that we expect from the CVB, and establishing a tourism-specific board to oversee the funding and the staff at the CVB.
The only thing, the only thing I see here is that, we only have a position in Chamber, the airport, and the, what was the other?
CAC.
Hmm? The CAC.
CAC.
I don't think there's need for more city involvement as far as ex officios and all that, I think you have enough city there already.
Okay.
So I think, I think, you know, I think there should be an ex officio, but in this instance, after looking at this, it's too heavy on the city, I think, and I think we wanna avoid that. Let it be those who have a stake in it, and I think we're well represented by that, that's the only thing I see.
I got a question.
Yes.
Does this resolution, is this the one you strike, we struck, or you voted to strike last time?
We strike it, but, you know, it was gonna be brought back.
Okay, but did it come back the same way, or did we change the fact that?
I think it was modified a little bit.
How was it modified? I don't got anything on it.
The backup is in your packet.
Yeah, I'll get a packet.
It was approved on, I would say.
Yes, I took under consideration Commissioner Torani's recommendation to have quarterly reports.
Yes.
And I've added that, and I've also added the 15% for arts and 15% for historic preservation.
Which I think was a consensus here at the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it doesn't have anything to do with creating a new one, we're gonna just-
No, it's a new board. It's replacing-
Not the board, but the CVB, Contract Board.
No, no, it's to place these standards within the contract that I see that some to put an item, we're going to renew the contract, we want this to be, what I do.
Okay, I see what you're saying. But it's not necessarily a resolution that we have to start and go out for proposals?
No.
They're keeping the same employees.
Okay, okay.
We're just creating a new board with more participation from the city. Wait, go ahead, Mr. Torani.
My understanding is, you're asking them to implement these changes for the Visitors' Convention Bureau in order to continue the contract, so that we don't go out for requests or proposals?
Well, it's up to the City Commission to go up for proposals.
But I'm asking, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I don't think that's it, because-
But that's what it says.
No, because, no, but it can't be.
I'm just asking for clarification.
It can't be, because the bylaws and the articles of corporation are quite different from what you're saying here. We can't tell them who they can have on the board or not.
No, no, I don't think that, that's not what I'm, okay, my understanding, and this is just for clarification, is that you're saying that you want them to adhere to this as part of their contract?
Yes. We can negotiate a contract with them.
We can't do that, because, I mean, we can't tell them who they can appoint, who can, we can't do that.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking, is this what the request is, and you're saying that you're not doing that?
We can't do that legally.
We can approve the contract with those stipulations.
Are you listening to my question? Because my question is, is this what you're asking them to do in order to receive funding?
Yes.
Okay, and you're saying that that's not what you're asking them to do by definition?
I don't think we can do that legally, we cannot do that, they have their own board.
Well, that's, I understand that, they have a board, and the board's sitting out there, so-
And I think, I think we talked about last time that, you know, the board, the city wanted more oversight on that board, how do we get that with keeping with the news?
What she's proposing, what she's, I think, what I thought was, we were creating a new board, okay, it would be under the city, so to speak. Okay, wait a second, it would be, it would be under the city, so to speak, but not directly in the city, it's not city employees, it's not, so, I mean, you can't go in there and tell them their business, how to run it, what to do, who to appoint, who not appoint, and how to spend the money, you can't do that. They have their own Articles of Corporation, they have their own board, they have their own policies, this is, this is like creating a PNZ board, for instance, or a PUB board, this is a new board we're creating.
But if we're going to enter into a contract, and we want to give those funds to an organization or an entity like the CVB-
Well, then you instruct the city attorney to get with the people who are interested in working with the city, and this new board, to form a nonprofit corporation.
I don't see why we can't put this in the contract.
I'll leave it up to the city attorney.
Mark, can you clarify that, Mark, can we do that?
All right.
To the extent that this resolution creates a separate, independent Cultural Visitors Bureau Advisory Board, if the city wants to create another board, I mean, that would be a policy decision for the city. However, the Convention Visitors Board, okay, is as a separate corporation, now, this, the City Commission does not have the authority to force them to do anything, however, however, if they were to voluntarily negotiate a contract, the city could negotiate anything it wanted to, and the Conventioners Visitors Bureau may have to comply with those requests in order to get funding, but it wouldn't be a-
And to negotiate that contract, that wouldn't be done with us, that'd be done by the City Manager, correct?
That's correct.
You see, I think the proper way would have been to handle this, is to sit down with the existing, go before their board, they can't do nothing, they can't make a decision right now, they don't have a quorum, they don't have a board, they don't have a meeting, this is, this is not fair, in all fairness to them. The way it should have been done, either go sit down with them and give a presentation, tell them this is what we wanna do in order to fund you, or we're just gonna create a board, totally separate, and you go in your way, you're just not gonna get the funding, and we're gonna fund this new board, okay? But they have to go get their charter and stuff like that, so they can, they won't be directly in the city, we don't want them for liability reasons.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you know, I think, you know, Mark, I think you, you looked at this closely, you know, we should ask the City Manager to negotiate on behalf of the city a contract which focuses on their issue of their budget, their funding, their board membership, and the issues that were involved with the, with the other, the negative issues that have been brought up by the hotel associations, and make sure that those three key areas are addressed, and then come back to the City Commission for final approval. I mean, I, that, to me, is my recommendation, to kinda move this thing forward, and say, you know what, you guys are on notice, you have 14 days, come back to the City Commission so that we can move on and get things going, and get people promoting Brownsville.
But I don't think that's what's up here for right now.
It's not, but that would be my-
Right now, you're trying to create a board, that's what you're trying to do, with four hotelers, airport, the others.
It's your, EDC.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber, CAC.
CAC, okay, that's what you want.
Tourism-specific members of the board.
Okay, if you wanna create that, if you wanna make the motion do that, then do so, if not, then I'll entertain another motion or whatever, what do you want, you have a vote, what do you wanna do?
Well, I wanna make a motion to pass Resolution 2009-050.
Okay, we have a motion. Can we have a second?
Do we have discussion?
No, I'll open it for discussion, I just need, I need to know exactly what she wants, so we can have a discussion.
I'll second it, to see what she wants.
She already, she already made the motion, this is what she wants, it's a resolution.
Okay.
You make the second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a second, then, we do a discussion.
Yes. My question is, are you saying, Commissioner, that this is a separate board from the board that already exists, or this is a board that takes the place of the current board? That's where I get confused.
Takes the place of the current board.
But, but then, Mr. Sossi is saying that we can't do that?
No, I guess we can.
You can.
You can create, you can create a new board that's a separate board, but that has nothing to do with the board of this corporation, you'd effectively be creating two different boards.
So it's two different boards.
Or you'd be creating a separate board.
That, that, that board's a contract, they contract you about it.
So if we want their board to be different, we can make a recommendation to the City Manager to negotiate a contract with a different makeup of their existing board, but we can't make them change their board? Am I right?
And the bylaws, they have the Articles of Corporation, this can be-
Well, the City Manager can negotiate on behalf of the Commission to focus on three critical areas that have been brought up before, and let them work that out, give them some time to see what can be brought back to the table. If it ultimately cannot get resolved through their negotiations, then the Commission can say, you know what, we're either gonna create a board or we're not, but at least you're allowing them to work it out and say, okay, you know what, you wanna be funded, this is what we'd like to have in place, so that we could help all parties.
May I have the floor?
Commissioner Torani?
I agree with Commissioner Camarillo, we basically are looking at an entirely new entity, and that entity would then have to have its own contract, and it would be simply a new Visitors and Convention Bureau. We already have a board, they're out here, we can contract with them on any term we want to discuss, and we can say, these are the terms that we need in order to fund you all, and if you can't live with that, well then, then we can't work together, and then we'll have to come up with a new idea, but if we can work it out within the next two weeks, and we can come up with a plan that's suitable to everybody, the city and them, then the issue's resolved. Otherwise, we have to form a new entity, or price it out and see if we go out for RFPs. But I would recommend at this time, that we sit, we not create a new board, but rather send them a contract and discuss contract contractual terms.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, since we didn't have a second, that, I'm sorry.
We can't hear you, Mayor.
I was just quoting-
I said, we already have a motion and a second.
Well, I'd like to amend Commissioner's-
Why don't we just vote on this one?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
No, we need to work-
I'm okay with it.
I mean, if I'd like to amend, the Commission, I mean, she's made a, she's made a motion, like to amend it by allowing the, by allowing the City Manager to negotiate on behalf of the City Commission to focus on three crea, three areas, membership, funding, and the issues pertaining to CVB board.
That's too broad, why, why?
Well, I'm sorry, let the City Manager enter into negotiations with-
Allow me, allow me first before you finish.
It's the next step.
Maybe it'll simplify it.
Excuse me, if I may-
Wait a second, wait a second, if we may, she made a motion, and we got a second, she's got a resolution here, if we could instruct the City Manager, based on the resolution, to negotiate this with the existing board to adopt this, I think that would be what's being represented here, because otherwise, it's too general to where, he's not gonna know what-
Well, then the resolution has to be adopted.
And then the resolution-
Why don't we just vote on, whether or not we're gonna-
The resolution has to be adopted to do-
I'd suggest that the better procedure would be to vote on item number 14 on the agenda, and really Commissioner Camarillo's motion goes toward, perfectly toward item 15 on the agenda. So I think the proper thing to do would be to vote on the resolution first, number 14, and then vote on item 15.
All right.
Okay, okay, so then withdraw your motion?
I retract, I retract my motion.
So then we have a motion to accept this resolution, and we have a second, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is that aye?
Is that two ayes?
We have three ayes.
Three ayes, and the other third?
I counted three ayes to accept the resolution.
Who was the third eye, Mayor?
Commissioner Gallon, Commissioner Camarillo, I mean, Samora made the motion, Commissioner Gallon seconded, she, they both voted aye, and I voted aye to accept the resolution. Now, we don't, I don't know the abstentions or the nays, how many nays?
Nay.
You got two nays?
Four.
Three nays?
Four.
Four nays. Okay, so the resolution dies. Okay, let's go to the next item.
Item 15, consideration in action to renew the contract with the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau involving the administration of hotel motel tax monies for two years, but with additional provisions to ensure financial accountability and responsibility.
If I may, I'd like to move to approve 15, including the terms as set out in 14, and any additional terms that the City Manager feels are necessary to approve the contract.
A second.
Motion, but we need a second, by Commissioner Samora? Any discussion, any discussion, Eric? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
I'd like to listen to a-
You're not the chair. Next item?
Item 16.
Mayor, may I say something?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 16, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of three hard monitor defibrillators for the Brownsville Fire and EMS Department.
Item 16?
Okay, the recap at the City Commission meeting of June 16, 2009, the City Commission awarded a contract for the purchase of 10 hard monitors or defibrillators for the Brownsville Fire and EMS Department. An update is that, at the request of the chief, Fire Chief, Lenny Perez, the purchasing and contracting servicing department, contacted Fisher Control and requested a quote for three additional hard monitors, so, excuse me, so the recommendation is, top recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of three additional hard monitors for the Brownsville Fire and EMS Department to the same vendor, Fisher Control, of Redmond, Washington, for a unit price of $18,488.
You wanna say something to me?
Eric?
No, no, but you're pointing at me.
Well, can I talk?
No, not, you got some personal say, say it to me.
Will.
Okay, go ahead.
Will? Okay. So the extended price for three, for these three monitors is $55,466.94, funding is in place, and-
We approve. We have a motion approved, and we have a second, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 17.
Item 17, consideration in action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of emergency medical supplies for the Brownsville Fire and EMS Department.
Who'd approve? Motion approved, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 18.
Item 18, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of aluminum signed blanks for the Brownsville Traffic Department.
Who'd approve? Second.
Motion approved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Who'd adjourn?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Interesting meeting, it's a good night.
You can use it after a while, don't you? The hits just keep on, you know?